Okay. Item is situation reading on August 10th. For date should be August 17th.
Okay, draft, uh, okay, August.
Seventeen.
All right, sorry for the delay, everyone. It is six oh two, so we'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order. This is our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting on Tuesday, July twentieth. If there's anyone joining us online or watching us on TV, if you would like to virtually participate in the meeting, you can do so on GoToMeeting, and you can do that on the app or by going to the website, Or you can call in using the phone number five seven one three one seven three one two two, and using that same access code eight five four zero six zero seven one seven. You can also join on the app using that access code for the meeting. So with that, I'll please have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the one which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, thank you, everyone. Our clerk can do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Toth. Commissioner Doctor.
Here.
Commissioner Partridge.
Here.
Commissioner Wetzel.
Here.
Mayor Payne.
Here.
Thank you. All right, next is approval of regular and workshop agendas. Do we any have any changes to our agendas for the evening? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed. Next is proclamations, recognitions, certificates of appreciation. This evening, we are going to hear about our Risk Management Professional of the Year Award for 2021.
Hi, I'm Pamela Hancock, and I am your risk consultant with preferred, your insurance carrier. And this year, we chose Tiffany as our Risk Manager Professional of the Year. She came in at a really volatile time to the city where your work comp claims, as well as your general liability claims were a little nuts. And she didn't miss a beat. She carried on, and she got everything under control, and she worked diligently with our staff, our claims people, myself, and really got it under control. And we couldn't be more proud. She's really a very good risk manager, and we're really happy to work with her.
Wonderful, congratulations.
And here is her award. It's no joke here.
Wow.
Perfect. Congratulations, Tiffany. Thank you for all your hard work, and if you want to say anything, you're welcome to.
Thank you. I know we have a loaded agenda, so I don't want to take up too much time. But I would be remiss if I did not give credit to the folks who are out there every day making safety their number one focus and priority. This is not one individual's effort and accomplishment. We did this as a team, so I am just as proud as everyone else, so thank you very much.
Congratulations. All right, next up is public comments for non-agenda items. So if you're here to speak on something that is not already on our agenda, this would be the time to do so. I believe we have a couple cards. First up is Ray Tuning.
Good evening. My name is Ray Tuning. I live at 11205 Third Street East, Treasure Island. I'm here tonight to discuss a problem I'm having with a permitting issue with the Community Development Department, and what I see as a cultural problem within the department. The first week of April this year, I contracted with a marine contractor to replace four pilings to support my boat lift. It had been determined that my pilings had been compromised and need replacement. I was hoping to have the work completed before the start of hurricane season. On April fourteenth of this year, a permit application for the repair of my boat lift was submitted to the department for approval. That was ninety-eight days ago. It should be noted that the original permit submitted in 2006 for the boat lift took a total of thirty days from the initial submittal to final issuance. That's over a three hundred percent increase. So what's the problem? Well, I firmly believe the department is misinterpreting the code and in part writing code where code doesn't exist. I also believe that the department is being unreasonable with its informational requests and demands, which were previously provided and approved during my initial permitting of the boat lift, and are clearly outside the scope of the requested permit today, which is to simply repair my lift by replacing four pilings. Unfortunately, I'm only given five minutes here tonight, which is woefully short of time needed to go through the details of this case and the code supporting my position. I do officially request the opportunity to do that to this group in the future. I met with the city manager, Amy Davis, and the department on July eighth. I requested that meeting because I believe I've exhausted all effort to discuss and present my case with the department. Several things come out, came out of during my correspondence and meeting with the department that I believe are noteworthy. One, the department made the statement that this is the way we've always done it. To that, I say, that may be the way you've always done it, but that does not make it right way. Number two, manager Davis acknowledged that the code does not specifically support the policies the department are applying to this, their permit review process and procedures for this work. Number three, the city stated that it is facing a backlog on permits. To that, I say that that is, that might be because of the issues and problems, just like we are dealing with here today. Number four, they claim the code is in need of updating. To that, I say, that may be, but in this case, I believe the department is creating code rather than following. Manager Davis, call me back the next day as she agreed to, and I want to thank you. Thank you. She indicated that they still condemn that their position is necessary, but because the extenuating circumstances surrounding my case, they would make an exception and issue my permit. While I appreciate the proposed resolution, resolution, I simply do not agree with their assessment on this issue. I feel very strongly about this, and if we don't address issues like this, we will continue to plague the department and our community. That was July ninth. The next week, the contractor checked on the status on Friday, July sixteenth. The department responded back by email, quote, "The permit is currently in review in buildings. Hopefully, it will be ready for approval within two weeks." That means it might take around a hundred and eight days to process a permit for simply replacement of four pilings for an existing boat lift. Wow. Commissioners, residents and contractors alike are frustrated and quite frankly fed up and angry with the way the department is being run. It appears to be a bureaucratic organization more concerned with following their own procedures than being guided by common sense and logic. It's inefficient, complex, and unwilling to bend to reason. Many of the processes and procedures are outside the requirements of the code and provide no real intrinsic value. Mayor Payne, you ran on this very issue. On your website, under platform, you stated, and I quote, "Our Community Development Department, which is responsible for issuing building permits and performing inspections, is in drastic need of improvement. I've been advocating this from the scent for, since I was elected as commission in 2018. We need a mayor and commission who will make this a priority. It takes far too long to receive permits. We have contractors who refuse to do business in the city any longer because of bad experiences. This must change in order to raise our tax base and make our city a better place to live," unquote. Commissioners, please take action. The residents whose tax dollars pay for the department deserve better.
If you can wrap up.
The contract to make their livelihood during, doing business here in Treasure Island deserve better.
Mr. Tuning, if you can.
It's your responsibility to make that happen. It's time to get serious.
Ray, please wrap up your comments. You're out of, no, you're actually out of, you're out of time. I believe our next speaker is Jonna Tuning. The timer's on the TV screen back here.
My name is Jonna Tuning. I'm 11205 Third Street East, Isle of Palms. Basically, I wanted to support Ray. I'm very proud of Ray. He's an engineer by degree, so he's able to dig into the code and to understand the logic. I too am in insurance, and I read contract, and I know sometimes that contracts can be vague or have ambiguity. And I feel that in looking at what Ray found, that there are gaps. And to Ray's point, there's interpretation taking place. And maybe that's the problem with our department, and maybe the code needs to be rewritten. Don't know. I do respect our codes and our law, and I respect and thank you, Amy, for, you know, making the exception, because we do have to worry about infrastructure and density and people doing things that are out of code. And I do, so I do totally respect that. But we have a reputation in the city, and a lot of our neighbors have complained. I run around, because I'm a jogger, and I see houses, and I wonder why, you know, maybe they, it's financial, but maybe it's they're running into code problems. They don't know how to address it. And that's why I'm so fortunate that Ray knows how to do it. But the bottom line is, in, in my opinion, an interpretation of this law, I would like to understand, because I think what we have is a waiver, and then we have a zone variance. And in reading what Ray found, and I can't cite the codes, but we have them, was basically if you have a non-conforming property, which we do, I think it's less than fifty feet or something, forty-eight and a half feet or something on the seawall, that you had to get a signed waiver by your neighbor. And so they signed off. We got a permit to put the dock and the boat lift and everything together. And then now it says we want to repair. And so to repair, you actually have to take the pilings up and then put new ones in, I suppose. I guess you could take the old ones up and take every worm out or something. I mean, I don't know. But basically, it says repair and replace. You need a permit. So we did that. But it doesn't say, oh, go back to start like all over and get the waiver. So that's where there's a gap in there. So what's the point of the waiver if it doesn't stand with the property? To Ray's point, what if my neighbor dies? What if somebody else moves in? These are the questions that I would like to know, because I, I understand that we need laws and things, but at the same time, I think that there's gaps. And I have a feeling that that may be where some of the stuff is that you've been running on to try to figure out what's wrong with our building permits. And maybe the waivers can help move it along faster. So that's what I would like to know, is to get clarification as to what we could do with the waivers and friendly neighbors versus having to fight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes. Okay. Sorry, we're dealing with a new system, so I didn't know that this timer was not running, and we've switched over there. So just, we're, we're learning as we, as we go. Our apologies. And while they're working on that, just as a reminder, we have recently restructured where we have our commissioner reports to be right after these public comments, so that we have an opportunity as the commission to respond to any of the public comments, because public comments, according to our rules and generally accepted rules by most, all cities in Florida, public comments are just a time for you to comment, not a time of discussion back and forth. So we are very strict with the, the time limit and the fact that they are just comments rather than a dialogue. So I know I certainly have some, a response that I'd like to share in my report, which will be right after this. So if anyone else would like to, they'll also do that at that time. Yeah, you have five minutes, Chris. All right, our next speaker is Linda Driscoll.
Hi, I'm Linda Driscoll. I live on Treasure Island, Sunset Beach. Just a reminder to have a sign on the dunes. Please do not walk on dunes across from the blue waters. It's completely getting, it's just all sand now on one part. There's no sign saying do not walk on dunes, so they're not using the bridges. The tourists are using the dunes. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other comment, public comments for non-agenda items? All right, hearing none. We will move on to commissioner reports. Commissioner Doctor.
All right, first item, tropical storm Elsa. We did have, I, I don't know if all of you know, but we did have a special meeting of the board, so that we were able to address an emergency resolution. Fortunately, Elsa was not what everybody had predicted it to be, so we dodged it. That's fantastic. And, but we were ready, and the city staff was ready, Amy and her team. And just want to let, make sure that everybody knew that, that we had addressed that and we were ready. Fireworks, fireworks were tremendous. I enjoyed them. I don't think I've heard anything that has said anything negative. And there's a lot of places that did not have fireworks this year, and it was great to see that Treasure Island did. Red tide, I think that's right now on everybody's mind. The boats are still out there. They're trying to clean everything up. The park department has done a great job in public works. I think that we're probably going to see more fish, from what I understand, coming ashore. That's going to be there for at least the next few days, so everybody needs to be patient. But I do understand that it's, it's a major issue for everyone at this time. And Ray and Jonna, I would like to, to work with you, especially where there are gaps. I'd like to address those with you and then, and take the opportunity to address those with not only the commission, but also with the, the planning and permitting folks. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Partridge?
Yes, I've been receiving a lot of calls about red tide as well. I just want to remind our residents that it's a county effort to clean up the fish. We don't have the resources in Treasure Island, unfortunately, to be doing our own cleanups. I did alert our city manager, Amy Davis, to hotspots where that needed, and it was my understanding that the Pinellas County did come out and address some of those areas right behind, what is it, blind, is it, the name's escaping me. Is it Blinds Pass? It's not Blinds Pass, but right under the bridge, that area when you first come in. Right behind the club, the club, Treasure Island Club.
Yeah.
The Pinellas County did come out and react to that and cleaned up a ton of fish out of there, and that was a, a request that we had made through our city manager. So please know that it is out of our hands. It's in a, in a Pinellas County kind of forum that they have the resources to do that, but they have been responsive as best they could. And we did go through our city manager to get some of that cleaned up. It is a problem that doesn't seem to be going away, so we'll continue to work with our city resources as much as we can. But ultimately, we're going through Pinellas County to get some of those things tackled. I've been receiving a lot of calls. There's been a lot of hum because of this meeting and the talk about Treasure Bay. So I just want to encourage people who are interested in the golf course and seeing what comes of the golf course to reach out to myself or your commissioners if you're on other islands and you have an opinion about that. That is just starting the discussion, and the discussion was prompted by grants that we're receiving. So we are in the very preliminary stages. No decisions have been made. And this is exactly when we want to hear from you, because this is the discussion phase of what's possibly to come. I wanted to also just comment on our city planning department. So there's a lot of controversy out there. I get a lot of feedback saying our city planning department is doing a good job. So just like any business, you have areas where they're doing a good job, and you have areas where we have to work on it. But I don't want to overlook all the emails and responses I get where people are getting their permits. They are feeling like we're responsive and, and what we're providing for them is positive. So I always like to make sure that we're keeping a balance there. And in response times, we are like any municipality. Certain times of the year, we have more building permits coming through than other times of the year. That's just a natural progression of stimulus checks, when people have money to tackle things, when people have not wanted to tackle things because of COVID, and now they've decided they're, they're ready and comfortable to do that. And we are municipality of a small size, and we are working to improve the department. But I want to remind you that our alternative would be to go to county permitting. And would that be any quicker? I don't know. I haven't tried to get a county permit. But when looking at other options, I have to be honest, that would be another alternative. So we want to work through what's the best for our city ultimately, because even though our county, our, our city municipality building department is working through issues, they are working through issues. They're well-intended. I've been on Planning and Zoning Board for six years. It is a very difficult department because of all of our non-conforming lots. If we were a city like in San Diego where all the master plan development was all these square rectangular lots, and all the rules could be applied so easily because they were developed all at the same time, it would be a no-brainer. But unfortunately, our barrier island isn't structured that way. We're on the water. Some people have fifty-foot waterfront properties. Some people have a hundred and ten. Our elevation on my own street, Tarpin Drive, is high at one end, low at the other. So because of the nature of how our city is laid out, there is a need to look at each individual case. So I'm, I, I sympathize with what you're going through and the fact that it isn't as easy as it appears. But I just want to begin the discussion where the alternative is, if we're that unhappy with our community development department, and we end up going to the county, is that going to make you much happier? I, I don't know the answer to that. But I'm just trying to bring up the point that it's a big picture, and we're trying to work through it. But some of the alternatives might not be what people want either. So as we're working through it, we're continuing to get feedback on that. But I just wanted to bring that out as an over, an overview of what we're looking at as a big picture, because I don't think some people realize that that is also what we're looking at. And then lastly, I got a lot of positive feedback about us having the courage to do Fourth of July fireworks. And we, I want to give kudos to our staff, because they did a great job coordinating with our chief, the, the police chief, and making sure that that went off without a hitch, and that we are starting to see some kind of normalcy for our businesses and our residents. And some cities opted not to do that. We opted to do that for residents, and that was a success. And I appreciate the city's effort on that, and that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Wetzel?
Yes, I echo the comments of Commissioner Doctor and Commissioner Partridge regarding just recent happenings, the Fourth of July, the Community Improvement Department. And some, two specific issues. I believe Ms. Driscoll, that we may already be addressing the issue with the dunes, because that blue waters of Treasure Island is across from the ring build lot. And I, the parking lot. And that is where we are looking to put in the ropes, the nautical ropes, to stop the people from walking over the dunes. So that was brought to my attention by another resident, and we have forwarded that on, and that's being addressed. So hopefully, people won't climb over the ropes. There's, it's being addressed. Hopefully, it'll work. Secondly, on it, a lot of questions regarding the boardwalk at the southern end of the island, and when it will be repaired. The city is meeting with Lands End, and we are trying to come to a resolution so that everybody will be able to enjoy that, because the residents really miss out on that. So it is a work in progress, and hopefully, we'll have a better report for everyone in the somewhat near future. That's all I have.
Perfect, thank you. As for myself, I just wanted to expand on what the rest of the commissioners spoke about on red tide. The county is leading a very large part of the effort for the cleanup. They're more so mostly leading the effort to clean up offshore and our inshore canals, so anything on the water. So they're trying to, they've hired captains that are out of work because of red tide to go out and collect those fish, hopefully before they even come ashore. But if not, they're hiring them to come on into the canals and clean up those. The city, on the other hand, is performing the cleanup on our actual beaches, just like all the other cities up and down our, our coastline. So it's a multifaceted approach. A lot of people have asked why the city isn't just hiring those captains and people on boats to go clean up or have our public works department just do it themselves. Just like most other employers right now, we are struggling big time to find employees. And finding employees who would like to go pick up dead fish is not an easy task to accomplish. So please be patient. We're kind of, because of that, we are leaving that really up to the county. We don't want to step on their toes and try to compete for people to do that. So we're taking a divide and conquer approach. What I will say, and I know this is a really disgusting request, however, if we all do a little bit to help behind our particular pop properties and scoop out any dead fish you may have along your seawall, you can double bag them in trash bags and put them out by the road. And public works, if you call them, will come and pick those up right away. So I know it's gross and smelly, but if everyone did a little bit of that, it would really go a long way, because having those in the water makes the problem even worse. So you can either call public works, or you can put them right in your trash can on trash day, and we'll get, get rid of them. So we are bracing for a worse week this week with red tide, particularly on the beach. So just prepare for that and make any accommodations you may need to do. I think that's all I had on red tide. In response to our building department, you are a hundred percent right. It was top of my list on my platform, and it still is. We have made a lot of progress since March, and I think Amy can attest that I kind of came in with guns a-blazing when I was elected and have really not, not stopped. So we have made a lot of progress, and I commend the department. There was a huge backlog because of COVID. A lot of people, like Commissioner Partridge said, deciding that they wanted to improve their properties and homes while they were sitting at home and had nothing better to do. So we were overwhelmed, and it, again, the staffing issue plays into it. It's very difficult to find a permit technician who's willing to sit at that front counter and listen to people come in and quite frankly complain a lot to them. So it's a, it's a very difficult job, and I'm not trying to defend it. I'm just trying to share the, the background that most people might not understand and appreciate. But it is something we are continuing to work on, and we're not, we're not to hundred percent success level yet. And I'm sorry that your instance has been one of the ones that hasn't been resolved yet. That being said, that's, this is the first time I've heard of it. You're welcome to approach me. Like Commissioner Doctor said, I'm happy to assist in those. You're welcome to approach me, like Commissioner Doctor said, I'm happy to assist in those special situations where they may be taking longer than they need to. So I can help push it along and raise, raise attention to it. Thankfully, we have several members of our Planning and Zoning and Local Planning Agency in the room this evening. I see at least three of them, so I'm really glad, four, I think. I think they are going to be embarking on a very highly regulated three-year process of revising our land development regulations and our comprehensive plan. So this is a perfect example of an issue that might need to get cleaned up when we're reviewing those, those codes. So like you're saying, there's holes and things that don't make sense. There are holes and things that don't make sense all throughout our code. And it's very frustrating for them and for us when we're hearing variances and for the planning, or for the building department, because they have to apply the code. When we're hearing variances, as we're going to do later this evening, we have to apply the code as it's written. So it's a difficult task, but they are up for it, and I hope you guys all took notes. And maybe you can talk to the tunings and get some more specifics about their particular instance. But keep in touch, and let's make sure that we get your issue resolved. I'm fully aware that it is, is an issue, and it is a top priority of mine. All right, that is it for me, so we will move on to our next thing on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. We have no minutes to approve this evening. However, I do know that our city clerk is working diligently on getting those finished up, and we've had some issues with our new system, so that's why they're, they're all pretty much done. We're just waiting on some finishing touches with our new minute keeping system. Next is consent agenda. We have nothing on our consent agenda this evening, so we'll go right on into items of business. First on the agenda is to authorize the city manager for the execution of purchase authority to Tampa Crane &amp; Body for garbage truck repairs to a total amount of $60,000 for fiscal year 2021.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to do a little bit of housekeeping. The purchasing rules have us at $25,000. We have to inform you that we're going to go over that amount. So this is a request to have authorization up to $60,000. We just went over the $25,000 mark, and we'll probably not use the sixty, but I just didn't want to come back up here this fiscal year. So if we could get your authorization to have the city manager execute a purchase authority with Tampa Crane &amp; Body in the amount of $60,000.
Okay, any questions for Mike?
Can you just state really briefly what the repair is for?
Okay, this, the, the garbage trucks are Mack chassis, Heil bodies. Tampa Crane &amp; Body can work on both of them, and they're actually the only Heil authorized repair shop in the three counties, I think, and maybe even four counties. They're over in Tampa, but it's, it's mostly, actually, I think the only vehicles we send over there are the garbage trucks. Usually for bent blades that are inside the truck when they start compaction, they get, they get bent or they get out of whack. Cylinders being replaced, hoses, and then of course, if we ever have any problems with the diesel engine and the catalytic converter, when they have to recharge them, not recharge it, but it's called, you bake off the catalytic converter, I can't remember what it's called, regeneration. And sometimes those things go, go wrong with the, with the engine, and it'll put it into a slow mode. So we have to get it over to the shop. But it's all, this whole contract is for just sanitation department.
Okay, and you have for $60,000, but you're expecting it to be roughly around what?
Right now, we're at, I think, a little over twenty-five. I believe if things go well, we've got August, September, we got two and a half more months, probably another fifteen to twenty. So I put it at sixty because last year we went $57,000.
Okay.
So I just kind of use that as a, as a marking point. I do not believe it will be that.
More like forty thousand, you're hoping?
Something, something there.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I move for the City Commission to approve staff's recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute purchase orders up to $60,000 for highly repair and replacement services for the maintenance of the garbage trucks with Tampa Crane &amp; Body Incorporated.
And we are using a new system, so do you want to go ahead and make the motion on the, oh, you did already, or did someone else?
I put that in there.
Okay, you can do it on your side as well.
Okay.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, any public comment? Anything online, public comment?
No public comments.
All right, roll call, please. And we're vote on the iPads as well, right?
Yes, I'm trying, I'm hoping this works for us. It's not looking good on my screen.
We have a long agenda item, let's just do it the way we normally do it and worry about this next time.
I'm not sure we can, we-
We can. Commissioner Toth is absent. Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. If you get it for the next one, we can give it a try again. Okay, next item is number two, approve auditor selection committee's ranking of firms for RFP 21-004 and award the five-year independent auditing services contract to Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram LLC.
Good evening. So after FY '20 audit ended, the city's contract with Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram also ended. And it was time for us to go and select another audit firm who would perform our city's audit for the next five years. To comply with the Florida statute, the city adopted Resolution 2021-03, and we established the Auditor Selection Committee back in March. So the committee met in April, and the committee established the evaluation factors, and we issued the RFP on behalf of the committee back in May. And four qualified firms submitted proposal, and on July 12th, the committee members met, discussed, and ranked the proposals. We have Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram as the highest-ranked firm, James Moore as the second, Purvis Gray came in third, and Malden Jenkins as the fourth one. On behalf of the committee, we are recommending that the commission approve the ranking of the firms and approve awarding the five-year contract to Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram. Is there any questions?
Thank you, any questions? Thank you for all of your hard work on the staff guiding us through that, and thank you to Commissioners Doctor and Partridge for sitting on that committee with me. So we will entertain a motion.
Sure. I move to approve the Auditor Selection Committee's ranking of the firms for the RFP 21-004 and authorize awarding the independent auditing services contract to the highest-ranked firm, which was Carr Riggs &amp; Ingram LLC.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to let the public know that we had sat on this committee, and we diligently looked at all the firms. But this current firm that we have and we've been working with came out not in a close first, but a pretty significant first. So you can feel rest assured that due diligence was done, and this was a firm that was definitely highly recommended.
Yeah, their comments? Okay, any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Do you see the, on your screen now? Did I get it right over here?
I do not.
No, no.
I'll try again on the next round.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Item number three is adopt Resolution 2021-09, proposed property tax millage rate for fiscal year 2022.
So it's high again. Every year, the city is required to calculate and set out valorum millage rate and follow the requirements that are specified in Chapter 200 of the Florida statute. Following that timeline, after the property appraiser certifies the taxable value to each taxing entity on July 1st, within thirty-five days, we must inform the property appraiser of the following items. Prior year millage rate, that is FY '21's millage rate, and the current year proposed millage rate, that is FY '22's proposed rate, and the current year rollback rate, and the date, time, and meeting place of the budget hearing. Once that step is done, the property appraiser office will prepare the trim notices and send them to the property owners on August 23rd. Our FY '21's millage rate is 3.6129. The city manager's proposed FY '22 budget, which is on our website, was prepared using 3.8129 mills. It is point-two mills higher than our FY '21 rate. Point-two mill increase is incre, is to increase our committed portion of the millage rate from point-three to fund the capital project for the TI Causeway Bridge. We have been following the plan to increase this committed portion by point-one every year to eventually get to point-five. We skipped the increase last year due to the pandemic. So this coming year, we are proposing point-two increase to catch up and complete our original plan. The breakdown of the rest has stayed the same. The proposed rate is very important because once it's set, it cannot, it cannot be increased unless each taxpayer is mailed a revised notice. 3.8129 mills will require four out of five majority vote to adopt. The rollback millage rate is 3.4301. It's the rate that would produce the same amount of ad valorem revenue as the previous year when we apply the new taxable value. The city is required to hold two public hearings on the millage rate and budget, and these dates cannot be the same dates as the county commission or the school board meetings. Any change in the meeting time of the first public hearing will require notice to each city property taxpayer. We are scheduling the budget hearing to be on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. And Monday, September 20th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. These days do not conflict with the school board or the county's hearing schedules, and we will hold our regular commission meetings and workshops after the budget hearings. Adoption of this Resolution 2021-9 would approve the proposed millage rate of 3.8129 and the first public hearing of the budget on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. here at the City Hall. Is there any question?
Thank you, any questions? Was that September 20th date, that was on the meeting schedule that we all have already discussed and agreed to?
I believe so, we can confirm that, but I believe so. That was what we discussed the last time when we had to pick those dates is the whole calendar.
That'll be our regular meeting, we're just moving it one day in advance, right?
Correct.
Mayor, there is one correction to the resolution that's before you. It says Thursday, September 7th, it should say Tuesday, September 7th.
Okay, any other questions for Junco?
And just to be clear on this, we're just setting what the maximum can be, not voting on it at this point, just voting on what, that it can't go any higher than this.
Because it can always go lower. Right, right.
All right, that being all the questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-09, setting the proposed millage rate at 3.8129 mills for the fiscal year of 2022, and holding the first public hearing on the budget on Tuesday, September 7th, 2021, at six o'clock at City Hall of Treasure Island.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion?
No, I just encourage any residents that have a strong feeling about this one way or another to please attend the meeting at six o'clock on September 7th.
I'll echo that.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Anything online?
No online comment.
No one in the room? Okay, roll call, please.
Thank you.
Will it show up in like a box on the screen, or should it be up in the same place as the motion?
I don't know what your screen even looks like, so.
Okay.
We're just getting through it together. Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay, item number four is approve collective bargaining agreement with Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 4966.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner.
Good evening.
We are here to present the three-year agreement for the firefighters union, the IAFF. Our current agreement with the city expires at the end of this fiscal year, so September 30th, 2021. Staff began negotiating with the union members back in April of this year and came to a tentative agreement that was unanimously accepted by the firefighter membership. In your agenda packet, I went through some high points of what those changes to the agreement would look like moving forward. Some language change just to bring it to a gender neutral instead of a more masculine. We also updated it to reflect that it's now a fire chief instead of public safety director. We cleaned up a lot of language just that needed some clarification regarding sick leave requests, workers' compensation, safety committee. And then also pulled in some language on a paramedic training program, which was previously agreed to as an MOU. So instead of having it as a separate document, just kind of pulled it all in together. This agreement also implements a new pay period change, which would move us to a bi-weekly payroll processing, so an every other Friday, fourteen-day pay cycle. So something new with this agreement came about in the pay plan. What we're looking to do is find a way to not only attract and recruit new firefighters in this very competitive environment, Mayor Payne has said it previously, and this is just our reality now. Recruiting is a challenge. So trying to find a way to recruit and attract new folks as well as retain our folks with some longevity. We took this in two different paths. So the pay plan is set up between staff with less than ten years of service with the city and staff with more than ten years of service with the city. So with that, the general wage increase and merit increase scales are slightly different depending on the under-ten versus over-ten. One of the benefits of the under-ten, and again, this pulls into the recruiting, is establishing a step plan. So what that would do is help our new folks move through the pay cycle, or excuse me, through the pay range so that they could, within nine years, be at least to the mid-range. And this, again, is just something to help us stay competitive with other fire service folks that are out there. Our folks with ten years or more of service have a slightly higher wage increase and merit increase proposed, and also, but no step plan. And this also pulls in a slightly higher longevity amount for service award increments. We, let's see, also introduced a merit increase scale that had not been in the contract previously. So that is kind of a high-level, fifty-thousand-foot view of what took months and months of conversations to pull together. And so staff definitely recommends approval and authorization for this agreement.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, just to know this has been a long process, so, and it looks like everybody is happy with the end result, so congratulations.
Yes, thank you. All right, do we have a motion?
Sure. I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute this three-year collective bargaining agreement with Pinellas County Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local 4966, effective October 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any commission discussion? Okay, any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, hearing no public comment, we'll have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Next is Approved Collective Bargaining Agreement and One-Time Memorandum of Understanding with the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association.
Me again. So very similar to the item before, we're now moving into the police collective bargaining unit, and there is a same situation where our current agreement is going to expire at September 30th of this year. So we met with the PBA starting in March of this year. And once again, very happy to report it was a successful negotiation to get to tentative agreement, and the union membership also voted unanimously with the agreement that was presented. The high points of the updates to this agreement, again, updating some outdated language, clarifying some points that were previously confusing or needed a little bit of help with, there was intent and then what the policy stated, so it was just a matter of marrying the two together so it made sense. In some similar areas, holidays, requesting annual leave, workers' compensation. It also updated the maximum allowed compensatory time carryover. We allow for sick leave conversion for folks that have it available and updated the reimbursable personal property damage during duty. There's also the 14-day work period that would be changed for this agreement as well, so moving from a weekly payroll to a bi-weekly. And also with the recruiting challenges, especially in the field of law enforcement, focusing on being competitive for attracting new staff as well as appreciating our folks who have been here and celebrating that longevity. So again, we've got the 10 years, so under 10 years of service and 10 years of over. The general wage increases have been outlined for the staff that's under 10 years, and then a step program is also in place for those folks. Again, with the same point to make it a competitive agreement and have them be able to progress through the pay rates so that they could be no less than mid-range at the end of the nine years. And for our folks with 10 years or more of service, a slightly higher wage increase in merit, but again, no step program. There's also a negotiated one-time lump sum service award for folks who have been here more than 10 years. And again, it's just to really enhance that appreciation for their longevity with the city and the service here. Other minor thing, not minor, but just to quickly review, we've got some changes to the acting detective pay, cleaning up language with regard to shift differential, FRS clarifying language, and increasing the longevity service award by 100 at each milestone. So, once again, very proud of the successful negotiations and our great partnerships with both of our union memberships and just staff recommends to move forward and approve these.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a quick question. Can you remind me how many of our police officers have over 10 years?
We are at five now.
And how many under 10 years?
14.
Okay, thank you.
That was very fast math for this time of night.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the three-year collective bargaining agreement and a one-time memorandum of understanding, an MOU, with the Suncoast Police Benevolent Association Incorporated, both with effective dates of October 1st, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Have any further commission discussion?
No, just glad this is, everything goes so smoothly. I know they're all long, long time in the making, so.
I just wanted to say thank you to all of our officers and our firefighters for their service to the city. Very much appreciated. Look forward to many more years. Oh, look at that, it popped up on the screen. Any public comment? I know Sasha's here from the PBA. Do you want to say anything?
Just very briefly, my long agenda, only to say thank you so much, Mayor, Commissioners. You have an amazing city management team. This is a great place to be a police officer. We're incredibly grateful to this police chief and to all of you for the support for our officers. It means a whole lot in this world to be able to look at your elected and appointed and your chief and say like, wow, thank you. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, we'll do, do you still want to, we still want to do a verbal roll call, but also use on the, okay. Go ahead.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
All right, item number six is Ordinance 2021-13, Second Reading and Public Hearing to Amend the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget to Appropriate Additional Funds for the City Center Renovation Project from the Unassigned Fund Balance Within the General Fund.
Ordinance 2021-13, An Ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 City Hall Remodel Fund Budget to appropriate $551,648 from the General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance to provide additional funding and contingency for the city center renovation project, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date.
Thank you. Stacy?
Hi, good evening. Nothing has changed since the last reading, the first reading of the ordinance, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for Stacy?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Then are there any public comments on this item? Any online?
No online comments.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a motion, please.
I move to adopt Ordinance 2021-13, Appropriating Additional Funds in the Amount of $551,648 for the City Center Renovation Projects from the Unassigned Fund Balance.
Yeah. I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any commission discussion?
I just want to remind everybody that this was already funds that we had appropriated when we first looked at the project. This isn't new funds. We already had it in our budget. And I just want to remind people, although it is a large amount, it definitely is, this was one of the things we factored in the savings of going to a FEMA-compliant building versus remodeling an old dilapidated building that we sit in. And so I just want to remind everybody, because it is a large amount. It's shocking even for me to read. That's why I read it fast, because I thought it'd make it sound smaller. But in reality, we have a cost savings of millions and millions and millions of dollars. So just wanted to remind people, if they're new to our area and they're hearing this for the first time, that this amount has been thought out and long decided on long before this meeting.
Any other comments? I was just going to add to that, and also in comparison to what we would have been spending on a brand-new building, this is still substantially less. When I first was elected to the commission in 2018, one of the first things we discussed was a new building, a brand-new city hall in the park next to the community center. And I think there were several people that are in here tonight that were at that meeting, basically with torches and pitchforks, saying, don't build it in my park and don't spend that much money. So that was proposed at 20 million or more. And even with this appropriation and budget amendment, we are still under the $10 million mark. So we're saving half of what was initially proposed, so.
And I'd like to also piggyback on that. I think it's an appropriate time to thank former mayor Larry Lung, who was integral in us securing that building and for the price that we got it for, because now when we look at real estate in hindsight, we would have been in a really tough position trying to do a new build. Right now, we didn't know COVID was coming our way, but that truly was a blessing in disguise. And so want to give thanks for that was due, because I know he worked really hard on that for us back then, so thank you.
All right. Well, we've already done public comments, so we'll go ahead and take the roll call.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Onto the next item. Number seven is Approve the Purchase of Replacement Residential Recycling Carts Citywide in Anticipation of a New Recycling Holler Starting in Fiscal Year 2022.
Yes, so the city has been using Republic Services for their residential recycling hauler now since about 2012. Back in 2017, when it was rebid, when their initial contract expired, we just got lucky that they happened to be the low, most responsive bidder at that time, and so we didn't have to undertake the change out of all the carts then. So when we first started working with them in 2012, they agreed to supply all the carts. And all those carts that are out there today at the single-family homes and units under five were provided by them. So this hasn't really worked out very well operationally for the city in the contract. The provider is to change out the carts or repair them, provide extra wheels, and you know, do all that work themselves, but it never happens timely enough for our residents. And we strive to provide a high level of service in our sanitation duties, and so we want to provide the same thing on the recycling side. So we keep all those parts in-house, we store the extra carts, we make sure they're delivered, we make sure when they're stolen or misplaced or lost that people get what they need. And so going forward, now that we have to do this change out anyway, we never want to have to do the change out again, we would like to see them also city branded and match the trash containers so they look nice when they're sitting side by side out by the road. So as so, we put out two solicitations for recycling carts, one in 2019 and one again this year, and we did not have any responses to those solicitations. Luckily, there are nationwide contracts for this type of thing that are competitively procured with transparent pricing that we can use. And in looking at those contracts available and reaching out for quotes and asking for specifications that pertain specifically to the city and minimum order sizes, which is very important to us with our minimum storage area that we have here, Rarick Pacific was the most advantageous to the city. And one of the really good things they have, in addition to that small minimum order size, is the 10-year product warranty. And so that would really help us to anticipate having to do this again in the future whenever we just start need replacements. We can really plan for that a little bit better. So yeah, our current recycling vendor did not want to renew their contract, even though there is a renewable term in there. So we have a solicitation out right now to go with a different provider for recycling services. And that contract, the responses for that contractor due August 3rd. And that's when the second reading of the subsequent budget amendment would be. So we would have a good idea when we bring this back for a final reading, what those rates are going to look like before we purchase any carts. So I think that's about it. The amount is $180,000, and that also includes the change out of the carts for us, which is a large undertaking. Staff is proposing to appropriate the money from the Undesignated Solid Waste Fund Balance and to set the recycling rates to absorb this upfront cost of the recycling carts so that over time it reimburses that fund.
Okay, any questions for Stacy?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I talked to our city manager about it today. I think when we make this, it's a large changeover. It would be an excellent opportunity for us to re-initiate a conversation with our residents about what's appropriate to go in recycling and what's not. And our residents are so well-intended, but it's hard to keep up on everything. And I was sharing with our city manager today, I didn't know that I couldn't put my recycles in a Publix bag. I thought that was perfectly acceptable. I didn't realize it, it's a no-no. So it's little things like that, and while the talk is going to be humming through our city as we change this, it's such an opportune time, whether that be a sticker on the can, whether it be just a flyer. But it's always good to hit that educational time when the iron's hot, and that would be now when we're going to be making a change. So if you'd like help with that, I'd volunteer some help with that. I know you're perfectly capable. But I just think, I don't want to miss the boat on that. There's not a lot of opportunities we have for education. And again, I know our residents are so well-intended, and it's just a matter of reminding them about things that may not be on the forefront of their thought, like, don't put your greens in the recycle. We pay extra for that and all those types of things. But I'd like to see us do a really good job of educating the city while we're making this change.
Yeah, we don't typically do direct mailers to the residents because our billing is done through Pinellas County Utilities. But at a time like this, when we are changing vendors and we're changing carts out, we do have proposed monies out there to do a mailer ahead of time. So that is the opportunity, and we absolutely agree that that's the time to try to make that change. And that should help translate to better rates in the future as well.
And I don't think it should be a huge correspondence. We talked about that today. I think just maybe the top few things, because if it's too big, people are going to discount reading the full thing. So, but just those major things that we see maybe repeating. And I'd like to say, I mean, we discussed it today, 90%, more than 90% of our recycles are not contaminated. We're doing a great job, but it's just a great time to do a little bit better. And you know, things like the Publix bags or what have you. I didn't realize I could put my milk carton in, but not the cap. I could put my water bottle in, but not the cap. It's just all those little intricacies, but it's a great opportunity to bring those to light.
Yeah, in our recycling bid that we put out to try to solicit new vendors and get competitive rates, we did also share with them that we were third of the municipalities in the county, tied for third in least contamination for our recycling streams for both residential and multifamily. So that's a really big win.
Any other questions for Stacy? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to authorize the purchase of residential recycling cans from Rarick Pacific Company in not to exceed the amount of $180,000.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further commission discussion? I just wanted to say I was able to meet one of the representatives from Rarick, and I didn't even tell Stacy about it, at one of the Pinellas mayor's council meetings. And I was really impressed with her knowledge of everything she was talking about and their customer service. They really seemed like they will be good partners, so looking forward to that. And then kind of unrelated from this, but similar to what Commissioner Partridge was saying, I think as we do start to prepare to put that out to bid and explore new options, I think it is something that a lot of residents north of Central Avenue, if you will, would love to have the recycling day on the same day as their trash day. So they right now have an extra pickup day, and I think that would be great if we could consolidate that. I know we don't have full control over that, but if we can try to advocate for that, that would be wonderful.
We did remember that from the last time, and we have taken that into consideration in the new bid to try to push it that way.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call? Or no, public comment, sorry. Looks like Ross had a comment. No comment? Anyone else? Anyone online?
No online comment.
All right, with that, we'll do a roll call.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
All right, next item is number eight, Ordinance 2021-14, First Reading to Appropriate Undesignated Fund Balance Within the Solid Waste Fund for the Purchase of Residential Recycling Carts.
Ordinance 2021-14, An Ordinance of the City of Treasure Island, Florida, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget within the Solid Waste Fund to appropriate $180,000 from the Undesignated Fund Balance to purchase replacement recycling carts, providing for severability, conflict, and an effective date.
This is just the first reading of the accompanying budget amendment for the purchase that was just discussed.
Okay, any questions? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 2021-14 for a budget amendment in the Solid Waste Fund at this first reading and scheduled for a second and final reading before the final adoption on August 3rd, 2021.
I'll second.
Excuse me, there was a typographical error. It should be August 17th.
Sorry about that. It is, let me re, I'll remake the motion. I apologize. I move to approve Ordinance 2021-14 for a budget amendment in the Solid Waste Fund at this first reading
at this first reading and scheduled for the second and final reading before final adoption on August 17th, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, any public comment? All right, hearing none, we'll do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Okay. Next is our, and last item on our agenda for the regular meeting is our quasi-judicial hearing, which is for variance application, V A R dash zero 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 nine nine dash 2021, 500 Treasure Island Causeway. The variance request is to reduce the minimum width of a standard parking space by four to six inches from nine feet to eight point seven feet for the restriping of twenty-seven spaces from nine feet to eight and a half feet for the restriping of fifteen spaces and nine feet to seven point nine feet for one space for the purpose of the dumpster area. And first off, we will have, um, our city attorney read the explanation of the variance process, so everyone's familiar with what we are about to embark on.
Okay, so we'll begin, um, in just a moment, the clerk will have everyone who wants to testify, um, stand if they're able and raise their right hand, and she'll swear them in. After that, um, the commission will disclose whether or not there's any ex parte communications, and then the applicant will be given time, ten minutes, to present their, their case. Um, at that time, the city commission may have questions for them, or even staff may have questions. After the applicant has concluded, then city staff will do their presentation. Again, at that time, the commission may have questions for city staff, or the applicant may have questions for city staff. If the applicant has questions for city staff, it suggests that at the conclusion of staff's presentation, that they, um, tell the commission what their questions are, and then the commission can direct staff to respond. Um, at the conclusion of that, the public will have an opportunity to comment, and then it will be followed up by the applicant having a five-minute rebuttal time to answer any final questions and give their final points. At that point, the commission will close the public hearing, and then they will go into deliberations where there will be, um, commission discussions and, and a motion and action taken. So, at this time, um, if anyone who is offering testimony on this matter would please stand and raise their right hand, the clerk will swear you in.
This includes anyone of the public who may be wanting to speak during public comment? So, if anyone is here to provide their comment on this variance, please stand and be sworn in.
I count three speakers. With your right hand raised, do you affirm that the statements you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. Um, let's see. Do any of our commissioners have any ex parte communications that we need to disclose?
None.
Okay. Um, before we open the public hearing, I did just want to, um, remind everyone or let everyone know that when we're considering variances, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, this is something that is very, um, according to the code as we have written. So, as much as any of us individually here may, um, wish the code were written differently, um, it is our obligation to act in a quasi-judicial manner here and apply the, the law, the code as it is written. So, it's nothing personal, we have a very strict, um, equation for meeting the requirements of a variance that we'll certainly be going through. Um, so I'd just like to lay that groundwork before we get started. So, we'll open the public hearing now and have the applicant's presentation.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Mayor, my name is Kelly Puckett, and I am here on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Treasure Island Tennis and Yacht Club Condominiums Building Number Two. I've been asked to present the variance and, uh, give you as much information as you need to try to help you make a decision we hope is beneficial for us. Um, hopefully, I won't take ten minutes, because if I do, you'll probably start, you know, nodding off, but, uh, if, if, if you start nodding off, that's okay. Um, in 1974, our building was constructed, and at that time, they created seventy-three parking spots, one for each unit. That is called the limited common area, that's required by law as well. And it's also in our constitution, our Declaration of Condominium, everybody has one spot. Well, unfortunately, you know, we're a little bit younger than the folks that were around in 1974, and we're not sure why they did certain things. One thing that they didn't do is create a, an avenue for the city to come easily collect the garbage. So, back in the seventies, and from what we can gather by looking at some meeting minutes in seventy-four, seventy-five, the city approached the association and said, hey, we really need to get out those dumpsters in a little bit easier fashion, what can you do for us? So, the association gave up one spot on the north side of our building. It's a ramp right by the dumpster, specifically so Public Works can do their job. But the problem with that is, they violated the very document that was created. They took away an owner's spot. Then they looked and they realized, we had that same issue on the south side, but on the south side, we don't own that property, it's owned by the 450 building. So, back then, a little handshake was done, and the 450 building gave us that spot so we can get the trash out, or the city can get the trash out, and we gave them another limited common element space. There's not a person in our building can, who can attest as to why they ever did that, because it was in direct violation of Florida law and our own documents. So, we started kind of figuring out how, how, how are we gonna put this all back together? How are we gonna make it right? It's not whether we want to make it right, it's we are required to make it right. We have to do it. If not, it's gonna continue to be a hardship, and eventually, it's gonna be so much litigation that only anybody wants to deal with it. So, the board started thinking about, what can we do? How can we make this work? Well, we can't give 450 that spot back, because we still need to give the city access. They gotta get in there and do their job as efficient and timely as they can. So, we looked at o- options, we said, look, we had someone come out, and they said, you've got forty-two, I think it's forty-two spots, if you, if you reduce these twenty-seven by four inches, four inches, and these sixteen by anywhere between five to six inches, you'll get those two spots back, you'll be compliant, you'll be legal. And that's what we're here to ask, we're just asking that you help us get back to where we're supposed to be, because it's tremendous hardship on some of the folks there. I know some people who are, who have said to me, they want to move, but they understand that they don't have a spot inside the limited common element, which they're required to have. So, it's not only a hardship on them, it's hardship on the rest of the, the owners as well. And I know I've discussed with, with, uh, Stacy, and I know she's gonna be up here testifying in a little bit, uh, we've discussed other options, and she came out and looked, and she said, restriping, your proposal is the smartest way to go, it's the easiest and most cost-effective, and for her folk, it's the number-one choice. Because if not, we're gonna end up having a, a race course in our building, where they're gonna be out there doing racing out there with the dumpsters, going from one sidewalk to another sidewalk, traversing around. And that's just a waste of, of the city's time and money. So, um, we ask that, that you, you grant this variance, because, uh, again, it's, it's four inches. It's four inches, what we're asking, and we'll be compliant, and everybody will be happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is our staff presentation.
Thank you. So, that, app, this is for 500 Treasure Island Causeway, the condominiums, and the applicant, uh, Mr. Puckett and his group are asking for a variance to reduce the dimensions of forty-three parking spaces for the purpose of adding two parking spaces to come into compliance with their Declaration of Condominium. Uh, it's instrument number seven, four zero two one four one one, and that's dated January 3rd, 1974, and also with the Florida Statutes, Chapter 718, Condominiums. The application request is a variance to reduce the minimum width of a standard parking space by four to six inches from nine point zero feet to eight point seven feet for the restriping of twenty-seven spaces, and from nine point zero feet to eight point five feet for the restriping of sixteen spaces. However, in the May thirteen, 2021 letter that's in your packet, uh, that's from, uh, Mr. Puckett and Ms. Latham, the HOA board members to the city commission, that states that the variance is to reduce twenty-seven spaces to eight point seven feet and fifteen spaces to eight point five feet, and one space of seven point nine feet. The latter would be to, uh, for the new trash. The westernmost space is requested to be reduced from nine feet to eighteen feet to seven point nine feet to eighteen feet for the new dumpster area. This parcel is located in a residential medium zoning district. On August 10th, 1972, the city records show that an approved master plan required four hundred fifty-nine parking spaces for the club and the condos. In 1973, the 450 Treasure Island Causeway Building Original Survey that was signed and sealed and recorded showed eighty-one units and eighty-one parking spaces. Also, in 1973, the 500 building, the original survey that was signed and sealed and recorded to Pinellas County showed seventy-three units and seventy-three parking spaces. Both of these surveys are, surveys are part of their respective declaration of condominiums, and both were recorded with the county. The 500 Treasure Island Causeway Building was built in 1974. The Florida Statutes, Chapter 718, regulates condominiums, and our Land Development Code, Section 68, 486, we do not regulate parking from condominiums. In their Declaration of Condominiums, it does state that each unit shall have one parking space. And in this particular building, there are seventy-three units, so there should be seventy-three parking spaces. Currently, this 500 Treasure Island Causeway Condominium Building has seventy-one parking spaces. Our LDR regulates the size of parking spaces, and the regular car parking space dimensions at a ninety-degree angle is nine feet by eighteen feet. Just for frame of reference, a compact car parking space, as regulated by our Land Development Code, is eight feet by sixteen feet at a ninety-degree angle. Uh, however, this does not apply to this case, because, uh, compact car parking spaces are only permitted for areas that have ten or more spaces in a non-residential zoning districts. So, this is just for your frame of reference for size. ADA parking is also not a requirement for condominiums. However, if the variance is granted by the city commission, the association is required to provide a letter to the city stating that the facility is not a place of public accommodations, and that's a federal law. On the north end of the building, there is a dumpster chute, and it's internal to the building, and that's the same with the south end of the building, there's also a dumpster chute, and that's inside. Each area leads into one parking space, which is now just a space there. They have a ramp to go down, so the dumpster is easily accessed into this space, and they are striped off with ballers at the back, so nobody can park. This proposed project does not involve the utilization of any existing legal, non-conforming lot, and does not involve the development of public parks, public facilities, or public utilities. It does not utilize architectural and/or engineering features that would render the project more disaster-resistant. The granting of this variance would be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this chapter if the commission finds that these criteria have been satisfied and that a hardship does exist. The granting of this variance does not impure to be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to public welfare. The provisions of the land development regulations will permit the applicant reasonable use of the building structure or land. However, the existing seventy-one parking spaces are not in compliance with their association's Declaration of Condominiums, which states that seventy-three parking spaces are required. If the variance is approved by the city commission, staff requests that the following conditions are included in their approval. Condominium Association, Association Board must provide a notarized letter to the City of Treasure Island indicating that the condominiums are not a place of lodging, do not offer public businesses that use, that also uses parking, and have not been requested to provide handicap parking as a reasonable combination under the Fair Housing Act. The city is requesting that the applicant install a ramp and two wheel stops between the parking and the new dumpster area. The condominium association board must also install concrete flare for the dumpster navigation in front of the dumpster storage. The condominium association board must install a concrete flare for dumpster navigation in the corner for the purpose of their dumpster navigation. And the proposed site plan with public works comments will be submitted with the permit application packet for the restriping of parking lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, and Stacy is also here to answer questions about public works. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy? I was trying to follow along with your breakdown of the requirements for a variance, so I might just walk you through that real quick. So, the first one is that the variance is in fact a variance as set forth within the Land Development Regulations and within the Providence, Province of the Board or Commission based upon the opinion of the city manager or his designee. So, they have, it is your opinion that they have met that requirement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The second requirement is, special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the building, structure, or land for which the variance is sought and do not apply generally to buildings, structures, or lands in the same district. Can you touch a little bit further on that one? Do you feel as though the requirements have been met for that?
Yes, and only because it's the Declaration of Condominium that was, that's attached to the building.
So, the conditions or circumstances that are peculiar are the condo docs?
And they're not specific to any other building in the city.
Okay.
It's just that one building.
Number three, I believe you touched on strict application of the provisions of the Land Development Regulations would not permit the applicant reasonable use of the building, structure, or land. Um, number four is the peculiar conditions and circumstances existing are not the result of the actions of the applicant, the applicant's agent, or the applicant's predecessors entitled. Um, can you touch on that?
Well, as Mr. Puckett said, um, it's not his doing, but it's the predecessors when, the, the very beginning, when they wrote the condominium docs, when the, the writers of the condominium docs had written into strictly seventy-three parking spaces and seventy-three units.
So, there may be an issue there that we need to discuss.
There may be an issue, yes.
All right, number five is the variance proposed to be granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the building, structure, or land? Sounds like that one's been addressed.
Talking inches on each individual parking space to, uh, for the purpose of adding two parking spaces.
Okay. Number six is owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement, which is a result in unnecessary hardship, special conditions to be considered, um, shall include several things listed. So, that will be really the substance of what we discuss as a commission here.
Yeah, that's a city commission decision.
And you mentioned that first number seven, granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this chapter, you addressed that one already. And number eight was the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare, and I believe you touched on that as well. Okay, thanks, just wanted to lay that out there before we move on. Okay, any other questions for Kathy at this time?
Um, I'm not sure if this is for Kathy or for Mr. Puckett, but who's short? How do they, I, I see that the parking spaces weren't numbered until a certain, until 2013, I believe? So, who lost out? And do we know if the person who's going to be getting the very narrow parking spot has any opinion in this? I see that there is some concern by at least one resident.
That's, that's your call?
Yeah.
I can show you what you can do.
Just give us a minute, please.
Are you looking for the email from the resident or the two thousand thirteen?
No, the staff report, so I could show them the.
Okay.
So in two thousand thirteen, what I do is I'm on Google.
Mm-hmm. Good thing, that one, you mean right, right here by the, but.
Uh-huh, this is, yeah, so what happens if it's unnumbered?
It's a number, maybe.
Yeah, there's no numbers there, so it would number spaces?
Well, there, there are numbers.
Oh.
Not under the carport.
Yeah, are you talking about specifically that picture of the carport area?
Well, I'm just wondering, there's, it says that the parking spaces were numbered. I'm assuming the numbers correspond to the units?
Correct.
Okay, so if there's seventy three units and seventy one parking spaces, there are two units that are currently out of a space right now.
There are two units who do not have a spot in the seventy three, that is correct.
And do we know what they do for parking?
Right next to it, on the aerial, there is a strip of parking that allegedly the four fifty has a, a long-term lease with the club, and they are allowing us to use part of those as overflow.
Are there guest spots in?
We do not have guest spots.
And finally, just as a follow-up, do we know whether the person who's getting the short spot or the narrow spot, if they have a response to this?
I am not aware. I've never had anybody say to me that they didn't want that to occur. They went, first time I heard is when you said somebody sent an email.
Okay, that's all the questions for now.
Okay, any other questions for, at this time?
So I'm gathering with what your response was, if the Club of Treasure Island sells and you lose those two, the, the spots, that would be a detriment, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely, and that truly, that's what prompted this.
Sure.
This has been buried for, what, forty seven years? And it came to light last summer when we used to have, by a handshake agreement with the club, four guest spots. He took those back and just began towing everybody. And so that is, that, that's what brought this whole thing up because the young lady who brought this up said, hey, wait a minute, I don't have a spot in there.
Right.
And what happens if he sells that property? And we know it's for sale right now. So that's why we realized that this was something that had to get done and had to get done immediately.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and go into public comment, or do we want to have Stacy speak first about the? Do you need to speak or just?
I don't think she does.
I can sum it up really quickly.
Okay.
So typically, I'm looking for ways to make things easier for my staff, not harder. This does make it a little bit more difficult for them to get the waste out. You know, they have to go a little bit further and go around some corners and stuff, but it's not something that's not, you know, reasonably doable to make something work if that's what the commission wishes to do.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then we'll move into public comment. As a reminder, if you haven't been sworn in yet and you would like to provide public comment on this, you'll need to do so before giving your comments. Is there anyone who would like to, to comment on this?
I would.
Okay, please approach the podium and we'll swear you in.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you affirm that the statements you will give today will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please state your name and identifying information for the record.
Yes, thank you. My name is Catherine Soul. I represent Mr. Edwards, the yacht club. How much time do I have to speak?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, I just wanted to get that figured out first. The problem here, and I, I don't know the applicant, and of course, I'm not sure what the city's decision is going to be today, but the issue is the documents that we have show that there's a land lease on the property that hasn't been paid for quite some time. So the concern that we have regarding any parking is that it would be conflicting with the actual deeds themselves. And I have that information actually too. But mainly, and I'll actually read from this provision, there's a ninety nine year lease that started in nineteen sixty seven, and it's supposed to be a fifty thousand dollar a year payment to the yacht club payable in advance, and it hasn't been paid since, I think it is nineteen seventy eight. So the issue that the yacht club has is that there's this existing lease for the property, and of course, the yacht club went through a few bankruptcies since that time. And because there's no actual agreement with the condominium and with the city about the use of the parking, Mr. Edwards has an issue with how these parking agreements are being put into effect and what kind of variance applications are being put in. So I, and I know this kind of comes as a surprise right now, but we're trying to figure this out and look at the previous bankruptcy records to determine what actually happened at the time of the bankruptcy. So we ask that you deny the request until we figure that out.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, hearing none. We will have the, does the applicant wish to provide a rebuttal at all?
Only that, as far as the young lady, I'm not sure specifically what she was talking about, obviously. I mean, you go, you pull up everything that was recorded back in nineteen seventy four, and it shows those seventy three spots belong to us and the eighty one spots belong to four fifty. So I'm not really, I can't really speak to what, what her claim is other than perhaps there's confusion as to what this variance is for. That's the only thing I can, I can really say. But, but I thank you for your time and hope you help us do the right thing.
Thank you. All right, at this time, do we wish to have some commission discussion before we make a motion? Okay, well, then I'll wait to close the public hearing until we continue the discussion, so. Any comments?
My comment would be, I'm curious as to why the city was not provided with this information that was given before us just a few seconds ago. This has been going on for quite some time. I'm not sure why it remained a secret up until a few seconds ago. I met with our city manager at three o'clock today, and we didn't have the specifics about what was reported here. So that, to me, just naturally begs the question, you know, why? Why were we not provided with any of that information before this few moments? And then I guess my second comment is if there's a lease agreement or, or some sort of conflict, conflicting dynamic between the yacht club of Treasure, Treasure Island Yacht Club and the five hundred building, the four fifty building, does restriping have anything to do with their lease agreement? Because that is really what we're talking about here, is restriping. So I guess that's a question for our city attorney. Am I seeing something more or less than what's going on here?
So until a few moments ago, I have not heard anything about a ninety nine year lease. I have no idea who that lease is between, who the parties were, who their, who their successor and interests are, if there are such successor and interests, or how it could impact the condominiums. At this time, all I'm aware of are the condo docs and the plat, condo plaques that have been recorded in the public record that demonstrate that these condominiums have been created and have been sold to individuals, so they have a property right with regard to the lease for parking. I, I don't even know the area that they're discussing. However, as long as the condo is the owner of the condominium and the, and the common area, then it would be up to them to come forth to the city and to comply with the city's code on striping, and if they needed a variance, seek that variance from the commission.
Okay. Another discussion?
Um, I think that Commissioner Partridge summed up my thoughts on this as to all of that. So I'm, I don't see how the restriping would necessarily affect the who owns the land or not. I mean, I guess it may for those two people who do not currently have parking spots.
You might want to pull your microphone in a little bit more.
I guess it may be important for the two people who do not currently have parking spots. And I'm not even sure if they're talking about the whole piece of property or the two spots or the spots where the other people were parking and getting towed, so.
And I, I'd like just a refresher from our city clerk. When was this variance noticed to the public? That this, we were going to hear the variance today?
Last Wednesday.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. I'm just curious, the two people that don't have a spot, you must know who they are. Did they actually, when they bought their unit, did they pay less because they did not have a parking spot? Was there anything that was?
Go, please go to the podium, just so everyone can hear.
Obviously, I don't have any knowledge of what they pay because it's none of my business. I just do know that it's difficult, and, and this has been ongoing. There's been some shuffling of the deck chairs, which is, which has made it even more difficult regarding that seventy one spot. So I just know it's been expressed with that, yes, it is a problem. And this one person, she's here, if you'd like to hear from her. She's expressed at times that she would like to move, but she knows at this point she doesn't have a space in there, and that would be difficult and it could subject her to litigation if she sells it. She contracts that she has that space, but in fact, she doesn't. And that's just not, that's just not right. Like I said, we just, we need to get compliant with, with condo law and our docs.
Okay. All right, we can move forward with the motion if someone's making, ready to make a motion.
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, and Kathy has gone to her office to, to try to retrieve it, but there, there is an additional public notice that's provided. It's not just the notice that's in your packet, but there's a, a public notice that's provided to neighboring property owners within a, a certain radius. And that was also done in this case, but she's going to see if she can find that.
Even beyond the seven days, right? So her shortest notice was at minimum seven days ago.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. And before we make a motion, I'll go ahead and close our public hearing on this matter. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move to approve variance. I'm sorry, what, the number's not on our screen, one second.
Ninety nine, twenty twenty one.
Variance ninety nine point twenty one. It's going to be a lengthy one, so hold tight with me. To reduce the minimum width of twenty seven standard parking spaces from nine feet times eighteen feet to eight point seven feet times eighteen feet and fifteen standard parking spaces from nine feet times eighteen feet to eight point five feet times eighteen feet for the purpose of parking and one standard parking space from nine foot by eighteen foot to seven point nine feet by eighteen feet for the purpose of a dumpster area for trash pickup according to the attached site plan with the Public Works markups, including the five suggested conditions from the staff report. I don't need to read them all, do I?
No.
Okay. And therefore determine that a hardship does exist pursuant to Section sixty nine point ninety one of the Treasure Island Code of Ordinances, being that as a result of what occurred in the mid seventies, that T I T Y C is not compliant with its own Declaration of the Condominium, and therefore establishing that as the basis for this approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are we incorporating the conditions that are included in this?
Which is what I said, the five conditions in the staff report.
Okay.
Jennifer said I didn't need to read them.
Great. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, so commission discussion now.
Well, I think that definitely not having for the two people who don't have a parking spot, and if the alternative was taken away, is a hardship. I have to see which number I think that applies to.
Yeah, I was gonna, I think it's best to go through like we did on the last one. So I already did part of it with Kathy. The first requirement has been met, that it's, the variance is in fact a variance. The second is that special conditions or circumstances exist which are peculiar to the building. Everyone feels comfortable with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Three is strict application of the provisions of the Land Development Regulations would not permit the applicant reasonable use of the building, land, or structure. You're uncomfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Fourth one is the peculiar conditions and circumstances existing are not the result of the actions of the applicant, the applicant's agent, or the applicant's predecessors entitled. So that's the one I'm struggling with a little bit, so does someone want to kind of clarify what?
It's not there. It was the result of what occurred in the mid seventies. It's what I read into the motion. And what occurred in the mid seventies being not in compliant with the Declaration of the Condominium, that was no result of any sort of, I don't know what the technical term is, but it's, they haven't created that issue.
Okay.
And.
It's a result of something that happened in the mid seventies that actually is, makes them non-compliant. So what we're trying to do here today is, is help them get compliant.
And I think also that the kind of fallback option has, is not a failsafe anymore, that they have to address this now based on the, those parking spots that they were using may, may no longer be available.
Okay. Just reading this little, so the applicant's response on this was that the building was constructed in nineteen seventy four with trash chutes emptying into dumpsters in the same location they are in today. Shortly after construction, it was apparent that easier access to the north and south dumpsters was required by the city. We don't have any information as to how the city removed the dumpsters before the existing ramps were built. Sometime shortly after construction, a request was made to the five hundred building to create easier access to its dumpsters. We don't know if other alternatives were discussed. The ramp on the north side required the use of a parking spot within the limited common area. We had the same issue with the south side dumpster removal, but we didn't own a parking spot on the south side. So are we saying that this hardship is the result of?
It's not self-imposed.
Not self-imposed.
It's the result of what occurred in the mid seventies that made them not compliant. It's the not compliant thing and our obligation to help them be compliant if we can because it's not self-imposed, it's not injurious to the neighborhood, it's not all those other things we said.
Right, I think when this was built back in the seventies, the developer was the one that kind of laid out everything. Then it was all sold off to individual parties. And so, you know, the, it is a hardship now for those individual parties. And the original developer, who knows what he did and how they got the dumpsters out originally or anything else? I don't think that anybody really knows.
And they may not have even been aware that they weren't in compliance. This will make them in compliance.
Okay, number five is the variance proposed to be granted is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the building, structure, or land. And is, they're coming literally into compliance with the number of spaces that they need.
And our staff testified that that is the minimum way, that's the best way they can do it, is what they testified.
And number six is owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement result in unnecessary hardship. Special conditions to be considered pursuant to this section of the Land Development Regulations shall include but not be limited to the following circumstances. Redevelopment, substandard lots, neighborhood character, public facilities, architectural and or engineering considerations. What's our finding there? This is, so the question is, what is the hardship?
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I was saying, I mean, it's not designated as substandard, but it seems like it would fit in that category because it's not in compliance. But, um, neighborhood character?
Well, neighborhood character is that we don't put trash bins, you know, wherever. We put them in strategic places where our city can get to them, take the trash away efficiently and quickly. We live on a barrier island, rats are a problem. I would say any of those considerations would fall under the category of this being the appropriate action.
Agreed.
Failing to receive a variance could result in the affected owner possibly facing legal challenges, could likewise be exposed to litigation. Still a little iffy on that one. Does anyone have anything further to say about that? I mean, that, this is where we, like, what is the actual, the hardship is that they don't have enough parking spots and they're not compliant with their condo documents?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that's a hardship. Not being in compliance with their condo documents. That happened in the seventies, that was not a result of their action.
Okay. Seven is the granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general intent and purpose of this chapter. The staff pretty much covered that one.
Yeah.
And eight is, um, the granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Pretty clear on that one, okay. My only other concern was the public comment that was addressed, but I don't really, I don't really see the nexus to how it's involved. I think that that certainly needs to be resolved, but if they're just restriping the parking lot on their property, I'm not sure how that impacts the, if there's a lease, then there's a lease, and it's for the property, not, I don't think it has anything to do with the number of, number of spaces, so. Um, not really convinced that that has much to, to do with bearing on this, this decision, so. Any further discussion?
No.
All right, please poll our commission.
Commissioner Partridge?
Aye.
Commissioner Wetzel?
Aye.
Commissioner Doctor?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, um, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn our commission meeting at eight, or seven fifty-five? And we'll reconvene in ten, ten minutes? Okay. Reconvene in ten minutes for our workshop, and that's when we'll be discussing Treasure Bay and a few other items.
It's a nice thought.
This conference is no-
We're going to go ahead and get started. Take your seats.
This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, no, those are workshops. Let me know how, uh, how this goes. Did he? I know.
I still have her.
Let me know if it helps.
Because my chair was shorter than yours. But it's just, this is so high. Our other one was a height and it was on me, so.
All right, we'll go ahead and call our workshop to order this evening. Um, and this is the Board of Commissioners' regular workshop for Tuesday, July twentieth. Um, we had all of our dial and instructions for go-to meeting at the beginning of the regular meeting, so we'll jump right in with our city manager and city attorney report.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, I just have a few things. Um, the pre-construction meeting for the East Causeway was held this past week, so, um, we're looking forward to having that project being kicked off. We were hoping that construction was going to begin immediately, but we do have some, um, supply chain issues, so it's a little bit delayed. So we aren't going to mobilize traffic until we know when the construction's going to start so that we have the least inconvenience as possible. Um, the demolition on the city center building has started this week. The building permits were signed Friday, that was an exciting day. So we're going to be seeing the screen fencing going up around the property so that they can secure materials and whatnot behind there. The red tide is, um, is here, it's, it's bad right now, and it's probably going to be bad for the rest of the week. Um, as you've mentioned several times, the county is taking the lead on the cleanup, and they've done a fantastic job, and they did a fantastic job three years ago with that. Uh, they basically, um, take the lead on the water cleanup, and then when the fish does end up on the beach, then that's when our city uses our equipment, and we get it, um, off the beach and into the dumpsters that get, uh, emptied every day. So it is a partnership in, in combating the impacts, and we'll do the best we can. Um, and it's, it's tough, it really is. Um, it's tough to be out there breathing it all day in the hot, uh, air for our employees, but we're doing the best we can, and we will try to respond where we know there are issues. And if there are bad collection issues in various areas, to please let us know so we can let the county know to, um, try to go to those areas. And then I also wanted to make, um, an announcement. We're going to have a flood insurance seminar next month, August eighteenth, in this room at six o'clock. So please join us, it'll be educational. There's going to be some flood insurance changes coming up, and so we encourage you to attend. And that's it.
I have a quick question on the red tide. I had gotten a question just before I came to the meeting. Uh, one of our residents wanted to know, does the county put out any data as to? They, what they really want to know is it coming to an end anytime soon? Do we have any data? Is it getting better? Is it getting worse? Is it staying the same? Um, do we have any local data?
I don't know if we have any specific data. I'm looking at Stacy Boyle, our Assistant Public Works Director. Do you know if they give any kind of data that would be providing any kind of projected?
I haven't seen any forecasting. I just know that, um, I don't think we're at our peak water temperature yet, and obviously the increase in temperature helps the bloom, so just hoping for the best.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy.
Okay. All right, we'll move into our discussion items. First on the agenda is Planning and Zoning Board slash Local Planning Agency. Um, so this is an item that we had brought up in Commissioner Reports a few, a month or so ago, um, discussing those two boards. And as we go into the process of- And as we go into the process of revising our, doing the EAR and the comp plan and the LDRs, we had discussed the possibility of separating them or keeping them the same. So I think, is there anything that Ruth, I know there's memos from you. Is there anything you wanted to add on this item?
No, with regard to this item.
Okay. So just wanna open up the discussion on that topic again. Do you have any?
Do you wanna start?
Um, no.
Okay. Well, then allow me. Just for people who are just coming up to date with this particular issue. We've had a Planning and Zoning Board, a Planning and Zoning Board and a Local Planning Agency. That has been one in the same. Previously, there hadn't been a lot of Local Planning Agency type of issues and work. And so it made sense at that time to have the same boards. Once we got into a position where we're going to be tasking the Local Planning Agency with re-looking at some very important ordinances and looking at our code. And that's looking like it's going to be an enormous task. The discussion began as to whether or not we have the same people on the boards or whether we actually split the boards and look for who has, you know, skills or an interest in working on ordinances, which is very different than approving variances. And so that's how the whole discussion came to be about. I had one question in reading through the report that I maybe can ask now and you can answer it whenever. I did notice when I was reading Rick Krebs' application, it said that he is termed out. And I'm kind of curious, in a volunteer position like the Planning and Zoning Board, what is the rationale for term limits? Like, I get it on some levels, but I just wanna, I needed a refresher as to why we do term limits.
It's in our charter, right?
It's in the code.
Okay.
But it's the rationale I'm looking for.
I don't know, because I wasn't here when that was done. Generally, I can tell you that arguments on term limits, the one, you know, side is that you have the same people that are in the same positions. And while that can breed consistency, it can also make it so that new people don't have the opportunity. And you don't get the fresh look. So that's one argument. So they'll put in term limits. With regard to an appointed position, I'm really, I don't generally see term limits. I normally see it only if it's going to exist. It only exists in elected. So, I mean, these are, these are boards that serve at your pleasure anyways. But right now, what I can tell you is, is that the code does provide for term limits. I believe this was something that came, that there was a referendum on. But I don't know if it was just a suggestive, you know, like getting the opinion or whether it was actually a referendum for the true language to be in the code. I would need to do research to identify that.
I think generally speaking, I, I'm typically not in favor of term limits for this entity because it is such a high level of commitment. And I feel like in a small community, I support term limits at higher levels of government. But at a small, a smaller community, you're kind of locking yourself into, if you have a good person in the office that's doing a good job. I mean, it's up to the voters to decide if they want to keep them going. As opposed to what these boards are a little bit less of a time commitment than the commission. And there's a lot of seats available. I think, I even find it difficult, like we're gonna discuss next, the openings on some of these boards. It's a harder discussion for us to, when someone is an incumbent and wants to serve again. It's a much harder conversation. You almost need a reason why you shouldn't appoint them again in order to appoint someone else, even if that other person is more qualified or more dedicated or has a fresher outlook. So I'm running into that with some of these other boards. So I don't dislike the term limits on them. But I think that's probably the rationale is just to, like Jennifer was saying, force some turnover there rather than just having the same people on there.
So if we did move forward, split the boards, and let's say we don't get enough candidates and Rick Krebs wanted to continue, is that something we could do something about in far as?
Well, if we did split the boards, he would be able to, would he be able to serve on the?
Well, technically, he's been on both.
Okay.
But in actuality, if you're, even if you're on both boards, the action that they've taken on planning and zoning compared to the local planning agencies, you know, probably been minimal with local planning agency. I just hate to lose a good candidate over some rule that I don't even, I can't even justify myself. And I've sat on that board. So that was just a question I wanted to throw out there before we even get into a discussion was the term limit issue.
So what I can tell you with regard to your question regarding the term limits and what happens is that if no, it says, "No appointed member shall serve longer than six consecutive years unless upon the sixth year expiration, there are no available and qualified candidates to replace the expiring member."
That answers the question. Great, thank you.
Okay. We do have one card. We might have more people that wanna comment. How about we have our public comment, Lynn Fisher?
Hi, I'm Lynn Fisher, and I live in Isle of Palms on Eighth Street. And when this was brought up to our board, everybody on the board really didn't want to be split. The consensus was that we wanted to stay on the board. And even though that they're two totally, not total, they're different boards and they serve different purposes, there are things that you learn from each board that relate to the other. And I think that's gonna become more important as we do the comprehensive plan. Because there's things that have come across in variances and we're not really understanding why it's even in the plan. And would it be better to change it? And without that background, we wouldn't know to question that. So I would like to see it stay two boards. And we are, you know, we've done just the preliminary of a comprehensive plan. But we do have a beginning understanding. So to break it up and start really over again would be difficult. Also, we've already reviewed and the water management plan has been approved. And there's things in the comprehensive plan that have to change for the water management plan to be implemented. So it's another piece that new members wouldn't have. So that's my feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good, I didn't really think of that before, that they're, while they're very different functions and tasks, they are definitely very connected and linked. And as we saw tonight with the variance request, that's something that we should look at as we go into the comp plan and the LDR. So they have probably, I'm sure, seen a plethora of issues that they wish to fix moving forward. So that's a good, very good point. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? I don't have any other cards, but you're welcome to speak.
That's what my thought, that we didn't have cards.
Yeah, that's okay.
Diana Crable, Isle of Palms, LPA and PNC. And I just want to reiterate basically what Lynn had said. I think as a board, you can see that we had four of us show up, which is our quorum. And you're also gonna see that we take a pretty active role. We've been pretty dedicated. And I would like to keep it both together. Because when we get something that comes up underneath PNC, I specifically have directed, asked city staff, you make sure that gets on our matrix, because we need to get that changed. We need to address that. So we've been kind of building this stuff up. Yes, they, other people could come in and do that, but they don't have the background that we do. And I would even encourage, at this point, with Rick's six years coming up, I don't know what you have for applications or if you have other ones. But he has already started on this process with us. And with him having six years, he has a little bit more than like some of us. Cause all of us are sitting not quite at three years. So, you know, we've got three years of experience behind us right now. I think that's invaluable experience that you're not going to get from other people. And I think if you go back and you look, you'll see that we ask questions. We try to do what's right for the city and for the residents. We try to come up and look at it the best way all the way around. And try to cut, and try to make it more cohesive between the city and the citizens. And I think that was the whole idea behind these two boards, was that you did have citizen buy-in and things. So I just want to say that I enjoy working on both of them. I think they should stay together. Go back to that ordinance that was, I think, nineteen eighty-eight, where you combined the two of them together. And I just think that even though we fall out underneath sunshine laws like you guys do, I think we work good together. And I would have to say on the most part, I don't think any of us have any apprehensiveness on saying that we object to something. Or I don't understand, or this. And there's nothing, we don't cut one another down or anything. We work very cooperatively together. And that's a very unique thing for us to go forward with our city business that we have in front of us.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? I just wanted to say, I think, just to add on to what Commissioner Partridge said earlier, this conversation was brought up not as an insult to you guys or a wish that you worked hard or anything like that. I think we all agree that you're a fantastic board. And my concern was, having watched one of the meetings, and I know it was an unusual circumstance where there were some people not there, there were some people that couldn't make it. But I was just concerned at some of the discussions about timing of the meetings and wanting to tack the P, or the LPA on to the end of a Planning and Zoning Board meeting rather than meeting separately. That was a little concerning to me, particularly going into this really big undertaking that we're going to do with the comp plan and the land development regulation. So I think it's important to me that they be, if you're committed to serving on both, that they be treated very separately and the due time is given for discussion. I know we sometimes burn out at the end of a meeting when we've had a long, regular meeting. And then we have things to discuss at a workshop. You just really, you get to a state where you just wanna rush through things and not consider them. So particularly for the LPA piece, that's gonna be really important to dedicate the time. So I think if the board members, I believe, I didn't have a chance to watch your last meeting, but from what it sounds like, everyone is very much on board with accomplishing that goal and seeing it through to its finish. But that was really my main concern was just that we have the right people in place that are dedicated to dedicating the time that it's gonna take to undertake that really big, big project.
And I did watch the, I don't know if it was the last meeting, but the meeting where the board discussed it. And it seemed that everybody was very much on board with keeping them together. But I do, I share that concern with such a big undertaking of just splitting up the meetings. Because sitting through several meetings where, you know, you get to the end of one and it's difficult to, sometimes it can be really dry. Very important information, but sometimes dry information on that. So are you, can I ask them a question?
This is workshop, so it's more casual.
Okay, so for the members who are here, what are your thoughts on dedicating an LPA meeting separate from the planning and zoning?
Alright, so Ross Sanchez, Dolphin Drive over there in Paradise. In regards to the timing of the two meetings being combined, I do think that we have done a good job over the last whatever, twelve, sixteen months. Because the agendas are always changing. You know, I think Tyler, you may have made the comment about there being less meetings. I mean, there's two city commission meetings and workshops per month. You know, currently, we do one meeting for PNC, and then we have LPA either week before. But as we're in the PNC meeting, we are told the next month's agenda from a PNC standpoint. Sometimes there's seven variances or, you know, two site plans and five variances. And sometimes there's one. So if we're all coming together at six PM to talk about one item and they can do a LPA meeting right afterwards, we go ahead and do it. The LPA meeting, if it is standalone, I think it's the week before usually, and it's at a two PM, and they block out till five PM. So that's three hours. There's been some times where an LPA meeting lasts five minutes, ten minutes, just specifically to the agenda. There's some times where it lasts three hours. You know, we're talking about, we're two hours into this meeting. We have all done a PNC or an LPA meeting that has lasted the same amount of time as this, as this commission or workshop. I know that I'm okay with going forward with what we, I don't wanna speak for the board, but to answer your question in regards to splitting it up, I think we do a very good job understanding what is upcoming, what is on the docket. And then we make the decision as a group there to keep it separate or to combine them. Again, I don't wanna speak for them, but I know that that works well for us. And we have covered our topics. I know that we have grown. I know that there are things that we have learned, specifically Tyler, to some of the corrections that need to be made. Like Diane said in regards to the matrix, we are very clear about that as we're working on our comprehensive plan.
So you have the freedom then to, if they're both on, if you get the agenda for the next meeting and there's seven different variance applications, you can decide, let's not hold the LPA meeting after that?
Yes.
Well, the default is to have them separate. They're scheduled on a recurring basis separately? Like, I think it's the second and third Thursday?
So the second one is the night meeting. And then the third Thursday is actually PNC and LPA, both potentially. But it's at that, it depends. Because if the staff has gotten in a lot of applications, like they were just talking about, that will come to that PNC meeting, then they're not gonna, staff's not gonna set a big LPA meeting on that agenda item. It just doesn't, they're not gonna let them run that long. However, and we'll just have it at the second meeting.
Can you repeat that again? So the second Thursday of the month is the LPA meeting?
Yes, LPA. And it's at six o'clock at night.
Correct. The third Thursday is planning and zoning and LPA?
And that's at two.
Two PM, yeah.
And I say it's both in that it can be. Sometimes it's just PNC, because there are so many PNC cases. Other times, if there's just one PNC case and there's a particular LPA item like we want to start to talk about, almost like a, like how you all deal with a workshop, they'll have the LPA and do it, and then have another LPA meeting at night to kind of flush it out, finalize it and be done.
So there's always a standalone LPA meeting?
Yes.
And I think that's what our concern was, so I think.
But sometimes that gets canceled and added on to the end of the meeting on the following week.
It just gets canceled. So there's, yeah.
Oh, I see.
And that has to do with, it may be that, like, for instance, when we were going through the EAR process, there was times where the consultant would have the packet ready and we were ready to go forward, and we would have it that evening. And then there were times where we were like, no, you know what, we're going to not have it. Because either the consultant wasn't ready or we were right at that time where the lovely July first, where laws change. And so we wanted to hold off and have it at, you know, the second, or, yeah, the second LPA meeting at night in July, because we knew that different laws were taking effect that would impact that. So there are several reasons why it may not actually happen every single second Tuesday. But as items are ready to bring forth to the board, staff takes them.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I, that's a great explanation. And I appreciate that sentiment of being efficient with your time. But I think, and that's a luxury you've had in the past, up until now, when you're gonna start to have a much heavier workload with the LPA and comp plan and LDR. So I just think, moving forward, it's going to be even more important to hopefully, I mean, just monitor that agenda. And I just want a commitment that you're not gonna try to stack everything on yourselves into, onto one meeting.
No, I mean, it's, I mean, these discussions are thirty days prior to the actual date of the meetings that we're getting an agenda. that we're getting a, an agenda. Um, sometimes we are told, you know, hey, this is the agenda, it needs to be separated, and everyone's on board with it. Um, as a reminder, I mean, we're all voluntarily a part of this board. And that thirty days notice kind of gives us the collective, like collectively, we can say calendars, yep, we're good, you know, we're gonna have enough people there to focus on the topics that are going to be addressed.
Yeah, I think our, the team that we have now are ve- very dedicated, and I, I think that very knowledgeable. I think that, uh, LPA is going to get a lot busier, but this is probably the worst time to break it up, because, you know, they, they do kind of flow one into the other. And, uh, so I, I, I think that as long as the folks are, are, continue to be dedicated and hard workers and willing to put in time, that, uh, we should keep the two together.
Yeah, I'm, I, because I feel like that's what the, the board wants, is to keep them together. But, um, I guess just that, if there's anything that we need to revisit with those LPA meetings, if they are running too long, or, or not the LPA, but the combined meetings, that, um, you know, if there's any, anything that we need to readdress. I mean, I'm not sure if we want to do a trial run for something?
I think she's saying we're gonna watch you and make sure that you're not having long meetings.
What, what about the conversation we had had previously about adding alternates? So that we always had a number represented, because it is a small board. I mean, I'm back when I was on it, we had fifteen members. I know, could you imagine, we were there for hours. Um, but it also was a lot more input, and if one or two members couldn't be there, at least you still had some active, you know, minds going on it. So, um, and the alternates came up as a result of feeling like we wanted to make sure we had enough people working on something. That is so important. If you can't make it, or if, you know, or whatever.
And we just added two alternates last year, right? And now, so.
And, and they've been present. I mean, the alternates have been present at the start of the meeting. Um, on top of, the current board that's in place has had, I, I think terrific attendance. I know, I, I think I've missed one, um, in two years. I don't, I don't know what the actual facts are. But just in general, I mean, everyone is present, everyone is on time. Um, and the alternates have, have been present as well.
Okay.
You know, just real quick, as I.
Any opposition from the board to add more alternates? Do you think that would help or hinder, or?
I'm going hinder, just because I, I, that's just, I, I think that we already have two alternates, the participation's good, um, we have feedback from all different areas, all different parts of the city. Um, it's not only just, uh, uh, general feedback, but beneficial feedback. I feel like we've worked through things that are tougher than usual. To, for, again, I don't want to speak for everyone, but for me, I, I feel like we have enough qualified and dedicated personnel or residents to, to the P and Z and LPA board.
And remind me again, the alternates can participate in the discussion, but they don't vote? Is that?
Yes.
How it works?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, one thing I would like to note, though, in regards to our current P and Z and some of the, uh, agenda items that we have worked on over the last, I'd say, twenty-four months, there has been a significant amount of time, uh, and effort that has been reviewed in regards to those agenda items that have passed. And then, uh, fast forward, three, six, nine, twelve months later, and those projects have been deleted, or, uh, they don't take form, or something, something happened, wha- whatever it may be. Um, and I think that that can be frustrating, because we do spend, you know, forty-five minutes on a site plan, and then you find out ten months later that it's just not happening. Um, I, I, if you want to get into the details about that, I think that there's a spreadsheet that the P and Z, you can kind of see, there's a, I don't want to say a number like fifty percent or seventy percent, there's just been a lot of time and energy from the board to get things going for the city of Treasure Island. And for some reason, um, it doesn't come to fruition. We try to ask those questions on follow-up or feedback. Um, sometimes it's provided, and sometimes the staff just doesn't have that information. Um, but I will tell you that there are a lot of projects that we spend time on that don't come to fruition.
Are you referring to city-initiated projects, or projects that are?
Uh, no, applicants, I'm sorry, applicants.
By the applicants?
Yes.
Okay. Do you see a solution or a better process for that?
I don't think that we have the specific outcomes. I think they maybe just changed their mind on what they wanted to do, even though they spent money on printing, you know, tw- twelve plans, their time. Um, I don't know, again, every closed-out, I guess, uh, agenda item has a different end result. Like, I don't know specifically the end results, but I just know that there's numerous projects that we have talked about. Whether it's on vacant land, or things of, of things that are getting renovated, or whatever.
Sounds like there may be some, the only thing I can think of is difficulty with permitting, or any, like, just funding, things like that, after the site plan's been done.
Yeah.
That makes it become difficult, yeah.
I don't want to generalize and answer that speaks for numerous amount of projects.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Are we all leaning towards just keeping it the way it is?
Sure, if they're happy with it. We, the discussion started with the consideration for you, really, is how it started. So I think you've given us some great feedback.
We greatly appreciate they keep running the same well-oiled machine we have in place today.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you guys.
All right, well, sounds like we don't need to move that one forward to a meeting. That one is resolved, as is. Next, item number two is consider board appointments. Ruth?
I just wanted to bring this to your attention. At the second meeting, at the seventeenth in August, we will bring this forward again for final appointments. We do have, as you said, Mr. Krebs is terming out, so we're looking to recruit somebody to represent District One. We have received one application. So I just put this on the workshop to make sure that you were aware it was coming up. I didn't want it to blindside you last minute.
Thank you for that.
Any questions for Ruth?
No, I think we asked him.
Okay. Um, my only question was, maybe we want to discuss now is, um, we've been a little inconsistent or unsure on how to, how to vote on those? Do we want to discuss the methodology in which we appoint those applicants? I mean, so right now, I think we have three applicants for, so we have the District One, or we have four applicants. We have the District One seat open for planning and zoning. District Three seat is up again, but Mr. Sanchez is, um, able to serve another term and interested. And then we have the two alternates that are up as well. Have either of the alternates resubmitted applications?
Not at this point, but they haven't been informed either that they need to, so that's on us, and we'll take care of that. I'm confident that Ms. Worek will reapply. I'm not that confident about Mr. Anderson, but I will be happy to report back and let you know.
Okay. Um, is, does anyone have any preferences on how we handle that? I mean, the, the ones with the districts are very.
Yes. I wanted to clarify a question that Commissioner Wetzel had asked earlier. If, like at the last meeting, if there is a board member absent, then the alternate is able to sit in and vote in their absence?
Okay, thank you.
They don't vote if the whole board is present?
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, so what I'm asking is, if we, so for instance, when we consider the District One, if there's multiple people that have applied from District One, we can either go with, um, where someone just makes a motion to appoint a specific person, and then we go through that normal process? I recently watched a Pinellas County Commission meeting where they were appointing members of Tourist Development Council, and they just, um, did like a ranking vote on a piece of paper and submitted it to the clerk. Do we have a preference on how those appointments are handled? Or is it in our rules?
Well, I, I wouldn't have you do a, a ranking.
No.
Because then that all has.
Or a paper ballot?
It, it all has to be read aloud. So, I, I mean, you, you can do that, it's just that it prolongs the process, it doesn't expedite it. You know, I, I think it's, the easiest is just when you make a motion. Your charter requires roll-call votes on everything, so we're, we're still gonna have to go through that process.
And the discussion's always been valuable. I don't see another better way to extract more information.
I, I do agree on the, having the motion made, but I'm wondering if as part of the motion, we can include all members? Because, you know, that too, or if, if we can do that to open it, not just for the first person whose name is out, they're either approved, and then nobody else gets considered.
Right.
Yeah, because we've seen that in our fair room.
Yes, so I'm, I'm.
And that's what I'm just trying to avoid, is like, whoever's the quickest to make the motion on the first person, it's not. And then you're locked into voting on that person.
Right, right, yes.
And I, so if there, I don't know what the ways are that, that we could do it, but I would like to explore that, that we could have, like, make a motion to approve new members, and then we take everybody who's up for consideration, and then we discuss them.
That's how the county did it, it wasn't a ranking, sorry, I misspoke. They, I think they only had two, they might have had three, but say they had two or three people who had applied for a specific seat, then each commissioner filled out a ballot and voted for their one person they wanted. And if the, if there was a majority for one particular candidate, that's who was appointed.
Okay. Um, yeah, I still would.
I guess you could just have discussion beforehand and give each oppor- each commissioner an opportunity to state who they wish, who they would be in favor of appointing to that particular seat, and then have discussion, and then have a motion.
And I think that may be easier, um, because really, I think where you do the, you do your motion, you're second, and then you do your discussion, you're just kind of following a Robert Rules pattern, which we follow in general. But I mean, you're the commission, you can adjust for the item, and allow it to be where you, you could systematically go through each commissioner and have them discuss their favorites, or, you know, their, who they would select.
Okay.
And I would like the opportunity also, because with the, the other way, when you're just, somebody shouts out a name, whoever gets it first, you know, a lot of us, that person's familiar with them, but a lot of us aren't familiar with that person. And the, the, um, applications sometimes are just.
Not enough.
Not, right, it's just very bare bones. And I would like to potentially hear from someone, not to necessarily exclude somebody who couldn't be here, but I do think that it would give us, um, the opportunity to really see who, you know, everybody gets to know the person, rather than just the first shout-out name.
Yeah.
And particularly, I emailed you today, but one of the applications, like, if you pr- print it in a certain way from the PDF, you can only see like the first line of their discussion.
Yeah, I've tried, yeah.
So we just need to make sure that we can see all of their, all their comments.
I've brought that up a few times.
What?
I've brought that up a few times, I'm not sure the solution, with the way that our website's designed.
Maybe just a different, I'm sure our IT department could assist with that. That is really important for us to be able to read all of those comments. Even if, if you can see them, if you could copy and paste them into the report, maybe?
It's the same when I get them by email, it's the system that we're using on the website. You fill that in, you save it, you email it to me. And I'm only seeing the small box you're seeing when I pass it on, so. It needs to just be redesigned, and I know they've tried that, to do that a couple times. Clearly, we haven't been successful yet.
Okay. Well, if we can work on revising that, um, and extracting that data, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion on that? I just, so we have, we only have one app, I just wanted to point out, we have one applicant for, um, District One's empty seat that Rick Krebs is going to be termed out of. So if anyone knows anyone else in term, in District One, and we want to consider multiple people, encourage you to do that. And then we do have three applicants that we could consider for District Three, but Mr. Sanchez is willing to do that. And then we have three applicants plus the current at-large, or at-large alternate members that we could consider to fill in those alternate members. Um, with the code compliance board, looks like we have two openings, but they're both able to serve again.
Correct.
Okay. And those are not restricted to districts. So if anyone wants any other options, you might want to advertise the code board.
My one question for you is, do you want to discuss this again at the next meeting, before the seventeenth, on as a workshop, as a group? Or are you good with this conversation, and we'll put the appointment resolution right into items of business for the seventeenth?
I think we can move that up, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That concludes item number two. Item three is the Charter Review Committee.
Excuse me, mayor, real quick? I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to clarify, you talked about planning and zoning, and you talked about code. Just, code has kind of a, a unique thing to it that none of our other boards do, which is the membership, whenever possible. Um, the statute dictates that it, um, consists of an architect, a businessperson, engineer, a general contractor, subcontractor, or realtor. So folks who are in those professions, you may really want to seek those out for, um, Code Enforcement Board.
Can you add on to this list that you sent us and redistribute with the existing members?
Yes, oh, but I have done that work to determine who's who, and I'll email that to you tomorrow morning.
And, and then, um, the other thing is, is that with regard to the Sustainability Committee, is, is that moving forward as well for just solicit membership, or not?
So. It'll need, if we, the discussion has been, I think, that city managers probably discussed with each of you, discontinuing the Sustainability Committee? Is that something that we would need to take, obviously need to take official action on that?
Yeah, we were gonna put that on the next, um, meeting's agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move that forward to the next, the next meeting?
Yes. The first meeting in August.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, next item is Charter Review Committee. Do you want me to take that one?
Sorry, I was writing myself my note about Code Board. I just, again, brought before you, we were not able to discuss their address this last year due to COVID. Your charter requires that you, um, consider every five years whether you want to put together a committee to review and make changes to the charter. So that's up to you.
My question for Jennifer is, are we, are there any issues with it being late? Because it, the last committee was convened, or was completed in the year two thousand fifteen. So since it's six years later, does that cause any problems? What's the specific language in the charter? Does it say every five years, or at least every five years, or roughly every five years?
I don't think.
Going to go with roughly is not what it says.
No. Um, hold on one second. It says no later than once every five years, so you could do it more frequently. You're not supposed to do it less than once every five years. However, I will say with that, while you held it in two thousand fifteen, and then you had the referendum following, or the, um, election with regard to, um, the referendum with regard to those, I think it was in late two thousand fifteen. But with COVID, you were, we didn't have any committee meetings. We really limited those and only started them back at the end of the year. So, I mean, while I agree it should have happened every five years, I think, given that you had a global pandemic where they were, we were limiting public meetings. Um, you know, it was, it was wise not to hold that at that time. So if you want the committee meeting, uh, we need to have committee members, and then, um, of course, um, you know, go through what, what needs to revi- be revised, so.
Okay, so if we move forward with it, we would appoint members to that in the second meeting of August as well?
You could. I think that would be, I mean, just for consistency, since you're doing all of them, do them all at the same time. If you felt like you needed more time to get in more applications, then you could do that as well.
And then that would give them August until, when do we have to submit? Um, if they did come up with recommendations to be put on the ballot, when would those need to be submitted to the supervisor of elections?
It depends on what election they're going to have to go on. So I think when.
If they were gonna go for the November?
For this.
You don't have time.
You don't, you couldn't do it. You can't get it on the year.
So they would be on a two thousand twenty-two ballot?
Yes, yeah. And the question is whether or not that would occur in March, when they do the municipal elections, in August, when they do primaries?
We wouldn't have time to get them on the March.
Or in, or in November, uh, yes, you would still have time.
Be doing January, the very first of January.
But again, it would depend on how, how many revisions they were seeking to make. Um, and how many meetings they had to have to discuss those, you know. The last charter review was, um, yeah, I mean, you were on it, yeah, there's, there were, there were several meetings, but it wasn't. I didn't feel like it was a very lengthy, I think within six months.
Yeah.
Or less, it was complete. And that they had submitted it to the City Commission for Consideration and, and placement on the ballot.
How is it determined how many members serve on that committee?
Hmm, good question. I think last time we had, um, five. And I would generally, I mean.
It's not designate, not stipulated.
No, it's not designated. Um, but what I will tell you, just from dealing with boards, is that five to seven is always a good number.
Five to seven?
Mm-hmm. But it's just an easier number as far as.
Five or seven, because it's an even or odd number.
Right, always an odd number and it just helps with the coordinating schedules, actually getting people to meet and for it to be like really productive in that period of time.
I think last time, I'm not sure how they actually voted on it, but each, there was a representative from each district and the mayor got to appoint someone. So I'm not sure if they each had their own sole appointment in a vacuum or. So.
I'm not sure. We could look into that and you, and I could probably report on how they did it at next meeting. And then you could appoint on the seventeen.
Okay. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Can you mute whoever's, um, giving feedback? Anything else to add? All right, so wait, wait on some more information about how it was structured last time. Do we wanna do we need to take official action to like call a Charter Review Committee or we just appoint it?
You consider the need for it, um, and that's really what you, that's really what you have to do every five years. You don't have to have a committee. You have to, the City Commission has to consider the necessity of reviewing its charter.
Okay. And then if we have it in twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, would the next one then be twenty twenty-five or would we do five years from when the last one was?
It would be up to your discretion. You can do it to be back on schedule again. Um, or you can do it five years from that date. It's just no later than every five years you consider whether or not to have one.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, onward. Next item on the agenda is Award of Contract for Employee Health Benefits.
Good evening again. So, um, recently the city marketed an RFP for health and prescription benefits. So due to our organization's size, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage with buying power. And, um, as a result, what we decided was the most beneficial approach was to focus on soliciting responses from risk pools. And the advantage of a risk pool is, I mean, there's actually multiple. The, i- i- in a solicitation, what we do is it provides the city an opportunity to join together with other Florida public entities. And it gives us the buying power that we ordinarily wouldn't have. So in our current risk pool that we're a member of, we've got fifteen, or excuse me, fifty-nine other public entities throughout Florida with about seventy-five hundred, uh, covered employees. And compared to our hundred and fifteen, it definitely makes a difference. Pools also provide the stability that would spread the risk over a large group which can absorb if there happens to be a particularly high loss claims year versus us being a standalone. Um, again, our current risk pool that we're in is PRM, they offer a rate cap. So if we had a bad year, the most that we would see rate increase wise would be six percent over the pool average. And we've actually taken advantage of that stabilization several times over the course of our time with PRM. Um, it also, PRM also offers a, not offers, but they delegate a board member for each public entity member. So we have a vote, which gives us the opportunity to have a say and have input on things that ordinarily we would be constrained and not have the ability to say, have a say in, like plan design, offering enhancements, funding, how to utilize the surplus, which is dedicated specifically to this group health trust pool. So with all that, we received three responses. The Florida League of Cities, which is FLC, Public Risk Insurance Advisors, and our current provider, which is PRM, the Public Ma- Risk Management of Florida Health Trust. The Florida League of Cities and PR, um, so we've got PRIA, it might be easier to say that. The Florida League of Cities and PRIA offered a United Healthcare Plan, whereas our Flor- uh, PRM, we sta- they stayed with Florida Blue. So initially when staff met to assess the three different plans, we decided that the Florida League of Cities proposal really did not offer the most competitive, comprehensive benefits that were provided by the other two risk pools, PRIA and PRM. So our focus was to compare those plans and costs, um, for the purpose of this presentation. So in review of those responses is that both PRIA and PRM offer comparable deductibles as far as copays, co-insurance, and all the major plan categories. But the standout was PRM. In the HMO plan, they offered really competitive employee out-of-pocket expenses. Um, also worth noting is that should the commission decide to move to PRIA, to United Healthcare, there could be a slight disruption in providers. And one of the things that stood out in our analysis is that with that disruption for the current network providers, there were covered expenses that are currently paid for with our members that would not be paid for to the tune of like ninety-seven thousand dollars, um, which seems significant. So in our analysis, what we looked at was our current employee census. We have sixty-seven percent of our enrollees in the base plan, fifteen percent in a buy-up plan, and the remaining nineteen percent in a high deductible HSA plan. Using that current census, our annual total out-of-pocket would be just slightly over one point two million. Applying those same employee census and enrollee rates with the PRIA proposal brought it to one point two million, eleven hundred, eleven thousand, seven eighty-six, which is about a third, just almost over thirty-one thousand dollar savings. And then the PRM proposal brought it to one million, one seventy-two, which is about a seventy thousand dollar savings overall. So with that, and based on the overall analysis of the RFP responses, staff ranked the respondents with number one being PRM, number two being PRIA, the Public Risk Insurance Advisors, and the third being the Florida League of Cities. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions?
None.
Um, my question is, can you, um, address the change in philosophy from the last time we discussed employee benefits? Um, and when the proposal was to contract directly with the insurance provider, the carrier, rather than going through a risk pool or a broker? What has changed in your analysis since that, um, proposal?
COVID definitely had an impact and what we were seeing, um, is some of our neighbors were in direct purchase with other carriers where they were not part of a risk pool. And, um, our closest neighbor to the south recognized that to be an issue when they received a fifty percent premium increase for one year. Which when we're looking at the annual costs, that fifty percent is a huge number. So for the stabilization factors, we just felt that it was in our best interest to remain in a risk pool.
Okay. Last time there was, uh, the, the objective of contracting directly with the carrier was to provide um, cheaper coverage for our employee spouse, employee child, the combo plans.
Correct.
Is that still, is that not really a concern anymore or is it something that you would like to have but just aren't able to accomplish that with the bids that have been submitted for this?
It's certainly a concern and definitely a goal we are striving toward. Um, having these savings definitely allows us a little bit more, um, of a wiggle room to possibly use that savings to buy down. These are more budgetary decisions once we get past the decision of whether or not which carrier we want to go with, if risk pool, et cetera. Um, but yeah, that is something certainly on the forefront. And, and I know I feel like I'm beating the dead horse, but with the recruiting situation being the way it is and trying to remain as competitive as we possibly can, one of the great things about working for government, especially local government, is the benefits package. This is just not something that, you know, hourly rate salaries, you know, we, we can somewhat be competitive, but we really start to blow away the private sector with these plans. And so uh, unfortunately, the design that we have at this point, it's not really affordable for dependents. But we are absolutely focused on, focusing on making that a reality.
This is, as most of you probably know, this is what I, a large part of what I do in my other job. Um, so I totally, I appreciate all the effort that's been put into this and definitely appreciate a lot of the points that, that you're making. Um, any other questions for Tiffany?
Nope.
All right. Um, any direction we wanna go? Do you wanna, I guess, well, actually, is there any public comment? Anything online?
No online comment.
All right, should we move this forward to the regular agenda? Do we wanna put it on consent? It's probably the only thing we have on consent, so should we just put it on the regular agenda?
I would.
Okay. Pretty big one point two million dollar decision, should probably warrant a, a full discussion. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the Treasure Bay Recreation Facility Update. Our apologies to all the people who are in the room waiting for this item. It's been a long night. Thank you for sticking with us.
Uh, good evening, mayor and commissioners and.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to say a few things to, to kick it off if you wouldn't mind. Um, so over the years, um, various elected officials such as yourself and just members of the community have brought up Treasure Bay as, um, a park to, to either consider different amenities or, or add to the amenities. And so through the parks master plan process as well as our strategic plan, um, we got feedback from the community as to some of the other amenities that they'd like to be seen to be added or, or to that site. And so through COVID, there have been a number of grant opportunities that have just kind of aligned with a lot of those strategies um, that were identified. And so the, um, staff really did a great job of identifying various number of grant opportunities that we applied for. And we have not yet heard from all of them, but we're getting some indication that they could come to fruition. And so with that, we wanted to provide this update um, on that discussion that's been going on for, for several years, but especially regarding the, the grants.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, provide a proposed continued community engagement plan. Um, so we'll, we'll get into that as well. Um, so as Amy said, this is an update on the Treasure Bay Recreation Facility and the opportunities that we have in front of us right now. Um, all of these opportunities that we have in front of us right now are due to the efforts based on the adopted Master Park Plan and the adopted Strategic Plan. So before we sort of jump into the conversation, I wanted to just do a little refresher for everybody on those plans. So uh, the Master Park Plan was adopted, uh, back in August two thousand twenty. Um, a lot of community engagement went into the Master Park Plan. Uh, we worked with a third-party facilitator, Collaborative Labs, to host three community meetings. Um, you know, large-scale community meetings where we gathered a lot of information about, uh, community, uh, wants and desires uh, regarding our parks and recreation facilities. Uh, then we narrowed down the conversation after those meetings into, uh, focus groups where we continued, uh, the conversation further.
All right.
Um, we had several commission meetings where we, uh, came to the commission and, and sort of provided updates sort of along the, the way and ultimately, um, had the Master Park Plan pass, which just deals with conceptually um, how we increase use and, and, uh, our resident engagement in our parks and public facilities. Um, we also, in November of two thousand twenty, I believe, uh, passed the Strategic Plan. I think my dates are correct, but, um, so the Strategic Plan also, um, included significant public engagement. Uh, we had an online survey, we had a, a workshop uh, where we had members of the community here in this room, actually, where we, um, had a third-party facilitator there as well um, that helped us with the engagement. And I, I'm gonna read some of the items that are in the adopted plans um, that really help us sort of frame the, the conversation. Um, so, so goal one of the, uh, community roadmap within the Strategic Plan uh, is to promote a socially connected community through the implementation of the Master Park Plan. Um, how do we do that? Um, objective two addresses that. It's, uh, promote Treasure Bay as a flagship waterfront recreation facility. And it goes on further, uh, to state, uh, that, uh, the rec- the city will develop plans to create a multi-use recreation facility to include water activities, walking trails, pickleball, uh, and event space and et cetera. Uh, so the idea is to make that facility as inclusive as possible for our residents. Um, the Master Park Plan goals, really pretty much all of them really hit, uh, Treasure Bay in terms of this discussion. So I'm gonna read through them. Uh, provide a safer environment to walk and bike by improving connectivity between our parks and public spaces. Improve water access and water activities. Provide community workout and exercise equipment. Promote inclusiveness. Provide opportunities for the community to gather outside. Enhance environmental education programs and incorporate environmental sustainability elements into our parks and our public spaces. Um, goal one, under the environmental sustainability roadmap of the Strategic Plan, um, talks about how we want to become an environmentally sustainable and resilient community. Um, it goes on to talk about how we want to rise above sea level challenges. Um, and this, we addressed this by the living shoreline, that, the, uh, grants that we've received for that. Um, goal one of the infrastructure roadmap in the adopted Strategic Plan is to protect city assets to sustain the future of Treasure Island. Uh, we want to replace our failing seawalls with living shorelines where it's doable. Um, objective three is to enhance citywide connectivity to create an improved environment for bikes and pedestrians. Bold action two of the obje- uh, objective is to pursue funding opportunities for multimodal infrastructure improvements. So those are the elements of the commission adopted Master Park Plan and Strategic Plan. So really kind of our, um, our guiding, I guess, documents that have um, allowed us to be in this position right now where we have all these opportunities in front of us. And it's really, it's an exciting time because of the opportunities that we have in front of us and the need, um, you know, to, to potentially take advantage of some of these opportunities to address the, uh, needs and desires that came out of the Strategic Plan and Park Plan. Um, so July is Parks and Recreation Month, so we'll toot our horn. Um, it's a month where we celebrate Parks and Rec. And one of the things that we see pretty much every morning, our professional organization sends out a lot of stuff about Parks and Rec departments. Um, a goal that just runs through the fabric of what we do here is to increase use, increase resident use. Facilitate a healthy and active community and to increase engagement. So that Kathy and I essentially, every day, those are our goals, right? Not just here in Treasure Island, but regionally and nationally. That's how. That's how Parks and Recreation Departments work. I mean, one of the measures in how you rate a successful park is, are your residents using that facility? It's a bang-for-your-buck type of argument. So park plan, strategic plan, we've done a lot of community engagement, right? So how do you get all those things? And where can you, where can you put those things? In our focus groups and in our engagement, and it's no secret, Treasure Bay, like Amy was saying, is a conversation piece. It's been that way since, I think Kathy was telling me, 1993 or 1994. So this conversation has just always been around. So Treasure Bay comes up because right now, we have a goal that is to make Treasure Bay a flagship waterfront recreation facility. I think everybody in this room can agree that it's not that. It's not a flagship waterfront recreation facility right now. And it's not that way because I could go through some of this and it's in the staff report. We have low utilization by our residents. So I provided as an exhibit our golf course transactions since 2018. And it's about a 60/40 split is what it says when you just look at the numbers from our POS data. But I can tell you that it's closer to 70/30. There's a lot of things that we don't capture in terms of resident and non-resident in the statistics and the data. And that's significant. So 70% of the golf course transactions are non-resident use. So we're looking at 30% of the use transactionally of that, of the golf course specifically, is our resident use.
30% is resident?
30%, did I say seven?
I've heard 40, I've heard 30.
Well, so I can clarify. So our POS data, right, our point-of-sale transactional data that we have allows us to track all the, you know, all the transactions over the past few years since we've implemented that. There are certain things that we can't track, like we don't track Mondays. Like I could tell you that this past Monday, we had 26 golfers, it's $5 Monday. We don't, it's $5, resident or non-resident, so we don't, we don't separate that out in the POS, it's $5. So we're missing whether or not that's resident or non-resident. We can tell you anecdotally that a lot of it's non-resident. So that's, so 60/40 is what you see when you look at what I can tell you, looking at the numbers. But anecdotally, we can tell you that it's closer to 70/30. We also aren't able to track unique users at the facility. So I can't tell you if it's, you know, 50 people playing, you know, a few times a week, right? Or, or if it's, you know, all different unique users. So that's, I don't have that.
I, I just want to stop for clarification, so I'm still not clear. You're saying you can't track it anecdotally on Monday, let's just say. So how are you assuming that that's non-residents if you can't track it? I'm not following you.
I'm only able to, when I say 60/40, that's when I look at the document and I can tell you for sure what is resident and non-resident. So I'm.
So where do we get the 70/30 from?
Anecdotally. So we're, we're missing, so I cannot drill down.
Just based on their individual knowledge of who plays on Mondays, they probably have a feeling of, because those people. Well, so go with 60/40, that's fine. But I think their feeling is that, yeah, I think their feeling is that on Mondays, there are probably more non-residents who play based on who they see on a regular basis.
That's correct, and I want to just be clear about it because what, what we can show on the POS, because I think that's important, you know? That's part of this discussion. If our whole goal is to increase the facility use, it's important to know what the use currently looks like there. Especially with the golf course being 481,000 roughly square feet. It's more square, it's, it's the largest space that we have. It's more space than any of our other, all of our parks combined, like our green space. We have high maintenance needs, so.
While we're still on the use, real quick, you, you said you can't break it down by individual person, but do you have a number, since it's in the PO system, about how many rounds are played per month? Or for the whole year, or any, do you track any information like that?
Yeah. So what I provided in this is just the full, just transactions is sort of the summary, but we can drill down to monthly. I mean, because of the fact that our use is significantly slanted towards non-resident use, we see, like Saturday, we had six golfers, right? So the, the use during our slower season is significantly less. And that's because of the fact that a majority of the people that are playing golf are non-residents out there.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
I see it on here too now, you have a breakdown of by each type, how many rounds are played.
So yeah, so that, those things, and there's a few others that I mentioned here, are the reasons why when we look at what are, where are our greatest opportunities to improve usage and continue to promote a healthy and active community, we look at Treasure Bay as sort of a canvas to do these things. So right now, in its current function, like I said, our residents aren't really utilizing that facility. So we know that. But here's the good stuff, and the reason why we're here tonight to provide an update, is that with the guidance of the master park plan and the strategic plan and the community engagement to date, right? We've taken steps towards trying to figure out ways that we can address some of the community needs that came out of the previous engagement. And we've been successful so far. So we've, Stacy, our Public Works, has already brought to the commission the grant for the 500 feet of living shoreline through the Tampa Bay Estuary Program. And then I'm going to go into some of these grants and the reason why I think we're, you know, we've got a great opportunity in front of us. So one of the grants that is out there that we do expect to be awarded potentially next month is the Resilient Florida Grant. The funding amount would be 1.5 million dollars. Our match would be 667,000 dollars. This would be to continue the living shoreline. So right now, we've got the 500 feet. This would be the additional 1,840 feet of living shoreline. We would have a pond restoration that's out there. We would put in a resiliency berm, an interactive boardwalk, and educational signage with that grant. Again, going back to the park plan and strategic plan, those, these items are things that were identified by our community as things that, that folks want, right? We have a grant out there for a kayak launch. The grant would be for 61,000 dollars. Our match would be a little over 20,000 dollars. And this would allow us to put an ADA kayak and paddleboard launch, washdown station, storage facility, staging rack, and sidewalk that sort of takes people to it. Again, the kayak launch and increasing water activity was something that was huge in the, not only in the master park plan, but in the strategic plan. And then lastly.
Would we be able to, question on that? Would we be able to partner with a vendor to do rentals at that launch? Is there anything in the grant that would prevent us from doing that?
Not that we know of now, but we would have to see the grant agreement. I think one of the things that we'll talk about is the potential revenue opportunities for stuff like that. I reached out to Pinellas County and they gave me some information about the Fort De Soto kayak launch and the Whedon Island kayak launch. We're not those large places at all. We don't, you know, aspire to be those large places. However, those places make over 200,000 dollars a year. And some are, some years are way over that. 200,000 dollars a year on their kayak rentals. So there is revenue potential there. Again, I don't think we're, we're not going to have the, you know, Fort De Soto or Whedon Island, you know, I guess, traffic.
They do their own rentals, like city staff does it, or do they contract it out?
They contract it and they have a percentage, they're, yeah. So there are opportunities there for revenue. So the trail grant, again, it's a 128,000 dollar grant. And then we would, it would be a 50/50 match. And that is for a six and a half foot wide trail that goes around the perimeter of the, of the course. It also includes three exercise stations and two, what we call low-impact, like sort of space, community space gatherings or pavilions, if you will. In our focus group meetings, we did hear feedback about making sure that those are, all of these amenities are low-impact. So that's important to note.
What do you mean by low-impact?
Low-impact in terms of noise, in terms of height and sightlines, that type of thing. Everything that we're proposing based on the feedback to date, right, is all passive recreation amenities that professionally, we could say these are low-impact amenities. You know, not much different than people walking around with the golf club.
Right.
Right. So we have legitimate shot at all this. That's a big deal, right? That's a lot of potential revenue. Right now, we have, we have an opportunity to make that facility a flagship waterfront recreation facility. It can be a golf course, right? Or it can be a passive park, and that's, that's, you know, has to be written still, if you will. But one of these directions can be subsidized significantly through grants. And the other can't that we know of right now. So I think that's important. They can potentially coexist and that still needs to be sort of hashed out, right? Feasibly, you can physically have a trail that is on the perimeter of a golf course. You can feasibly have that. But there still needs to be a discussion about whether or not it makes sense financially to do that, whether or not it makes sense from a usage standpoint to do that, and that's all still to be written. So right now, the purpose of this, you know, conversation is to update you all on the progress, significant progress we've made based on the goals established in our engagement for these adopted plans and getting your feedback on where we are. And then pivoting now to our continued engagement. So it's, obviously, it is super important to continue to engage the community. So we have, and I think Amy could probably elaborate, but we have potentially two dates in September that we have held right now to have community-wide discussions to continue to build off of our previous engagement. And that's one of the things that I'm asking for direction on is if you all are in agreement with our plan to continue to engage. So we would have two potential meetings in September that would be facilitated by a third party. Those would serve two purposes, so it would be obviously to continue to get engagement and then also to educate people on, you know, where we are, why we're at this point, and these opportunities that we have in front of us. Because, you know, these types of opportunities don't come very often. So no decision has been made on the golf course itself, but there will be a need to make a decision on if these amenities are all amenities that we end up getting awarded on and you all accept the awards, whether or not these things can coexist. And that's really a decision that the community will have to make. And hopefully through the engagement, we can come to that, you know, we can make a decision there. Lastly, we plan to have a, sort of a focus group, a smaller engagement session after those two larger engagement sessions. And those, or that meeting would be specifically to address the amenities that we've proposed. And since our whole goal is to increase use, we want to talk to the people that want to use a kayak launch. We want to talk to the people that potentially want pickleball. And we want to talk to, you know, people that want more water access, what have you, and figure out what specifically would make you use it. You're a resident, a taxpayer, this is your park to use. So we want to figure out how can we make it the most usable property in Treasure Island for you to recreate? And then obviously to mitigate any concerns, because these are changes, they're big changes. So we want to continue to have that conversation with people. And we had really good dialogue in the focus group where folks, you know, said, you know, hey, this would be great to have, but, you know, what about noise? Or what about, you know, sightlines and that type of thing? And we're cognizant of that, so we want to continue to have those discussions. So that's the update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Any discussion?
I, I just want to, first of all, I want to thank you for looking at all the big picture items. I think that's important, kudos to getting grants. I did want to mention one of the things that I personally didn't appreciate in the staff report is the leading information. And I say leading because it seemed to be leading into one direction. And it was about the decrease in the interest of golf. And we, I had several residents reach out to me that I know that are in the golf industry after I posed the question to them. And those statistics came from 18-hole golf courses. And those were closing down because of cost being too high, which isn't applicable to our golf course. We don't charge hundreds of dollars to play. Some courses have closed because of that. Some courses have closed because of the time it takes to play an 18-hole golf course. We are not an 18-hole golf course. And most of them closed because of drought in places like California and places who had drought, which clearly isn't our problem. So I just would like to share, when you put out a report and you're putting information like that, that's to me comparing apples to oranges. Our residents need to decide what they want, but I didn't think that that was a fair representation of our situation versus what's going on. And that was my only point I wanted to bring up because it wasn't appreciated by me when I first read it, thinking, well, that's a bit cheeky. And then I did some research to find out, yeah, that isn't really accurate in comparing our golf course to those statistics. So I, I just want to caution, further information going out that we compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
I appreciate the feedback. I will say that I'm not entirely sure about the 18-hole. So what we can do is when we, when we have these engagement meetings, because half of the meetings is going to be us sharing information, we can make sure that we circle back to that. That statistic is from the National Golf Foundation where it said 11% since 2006 have closed. And again, I don't know if it's a nine hole.
11%, yeah.
Yeah, but on the website, it says it's mostly value-priced courses with greens fees less than 40 dollars. And so when I, when I see that, I do believe that our course is a value-priced, I guess, course. But what I don't know, and to your point, I don't know if it's 18-hole or nine-hole.
I just, again, feel strongly that if we're putting out information for information's sake, that's like saying we've had some drunk driving activity on Treasure Island, so let's stop all drinking on the beach. I just don't feel, if we're going to be objective, then let's be objective about things. And I feel like that's just leading information. I, I just, from a personal standpoint, didn't appreciate it. And I think if we want to go forward with information in a respectful manner, with integrity, then we just stick to what our city wants and needs are. We, we are not everywhere else in the US. We are not. So why we would start bringing that in now, I didn't understand it when I read it and I don't understand it now. And it's just feedback because I can't imagine, I'm the only person that is going to feel that that wasn't really appropriate.
Hurt, thank you.
Other comments?
No, just, uh, this is quite comprehensive, so I, um, I'm, I'm curious as to what the next steps are. Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for putting all this together. Like you've said multiple times, this is a discussion that we've been having for quite some time, and I, I do feel firmly that it's, it's time that we discuss it, and we move forward with a plan to, um, evaluate what the community truly wants and, um, make a decision and, and move on. So, I appreciate all the work you guys have put into this. The, the grant opportunities are phenomenal. Um, so I think you've laid out a great path forward with the community engagement, even though we've already had significant public engagement with the parks. Master plan that I feel like you've covered all those highlights there. I think it's important to have that public engagement here. And I know a lot of people in the audience tonight are, um, here too, because they care about this issue and want to give their public input. So, um, we want to make sure that we are providing you and others that aren't here tonight that ample opportunity to share your opinion. And some criticism we sometimes get when it comes to the final hour of voting on something is, well, you didn't publicize this enough, or you didn't give us enough notice. So, by having not just one workshop tonight and then voting on it the next time, we would appreciate your assistance in getting the word out there that we are providing ample opportunity to engage with the public and receive all sides of this, um, viewpoint. So, we can't spread the word on our own, so we're gonna solicit your assistance to, to do that. And we'll all do our best to make sure that everyone in the community knows, um, that this is going on. So, I think your approach to having two public engagement meetings, um, before we really, and then even micro-targeted, um, focus groups on each proposed amenity is a good, good plan.
I think the one thing that you did say is we do need to take advantage of all the waterfront property that we have. And whether that's the property we're sitting on right here today, uh, or, you know, Treasure Bay. And I think that that's what you're working towards, is trying to get the grants, trying to be able to have walking paths, trying to be able to have a, a living shoreline. I think those are the type of things that are gonna make Treasure Island stand out even more than it does today.
Great. And I think, just to lay it out there, it's gonna, they're gonna be difficult discussions, and just difficult discussions for us up here, 'cause I think we get pressure from both sides of the aisle, people that want the golf course to stay, people that don't want it to stay and wanna repurpose it. So, I ask that everyone be patient and understanding, not just up here, to consider all viewpoints, but also everyone in the audience to please have an open mind, um, really listen to what's being said when we do have those public engagement pieces, listen to what Justin and Kathy tell us, and not just have a closed-off, don't make your decision before considering all the, all the factors. So, we do have a couple cards on this issue, so we'll go into public comment. Ray Tuning? And I would, before you start, um, in the interest of time, not asking anyone to not come and give your feedback, but we will be having those, those public forums where you can engage with even more people, and more people that are in the community that care about it can hear your perspective. So, you're welcome to share your thoughts here tonight, and there, or either-or, whatever your, whatever your pleasure. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. So I, I am, uh, I'm in favor of this, and I have been an advocate of this probably for four to five years. When I first moved here in two thousand and six, I played that, that golf course one time. And, um, I only did it once, I'm a golfer, as well as a boater. And I play golf in other places because I find them more challenging, but I know that it serves a purpose. But, just like Justin had said, this is a somewhat of a flagship piece of open-space recreational area that, that the city owns, and all of the taxpayers are paying for it. And right now, I, I thought it was a much higher number, and I would, I would suggest that they go back and double-check their numbers. But at one time, when I looked at this five years ago, I thought this thing was losing like four hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't know if that's right or not, but I think that should be investigated to the fullest, to make sure, and I think our person in charge of finance should do that. But it, it is, it is something that should be broadly utilized. And right now, I think it's just too narrowly focused. When I drive my boat, and the reason I brought up I'm a boater, is I drive by there, and I see one or two people out there at most, just about any time I go by there. Now, I don't wanna take anything away from those people that golf and, and what have you, because you saw me here two or three months ago, fighting for Triangle Park to make sure there wasn't gonna be a pavilion there. But it's a half an acre, and this is a much, much larger thing, and, and it's more, that's a neighborhood park, and this is a community park. So I hope that you guys would be open and receptive to repurposing this place so that it can be utilized on a much more broader basis for the entire city of Treasure Island, and all residents that live here. There are multiple places within Pinellas County to play golf. I don't mind driving a little further to do that. It suits me, I know it doesn't suit everybody, but I just wanted to make that statement. I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, our next comment is, and if anyone else wants to comment, you can fill out a card and bring that up to Ruth, or you can speak without filling a card, that's fine. Um, next we have Ed Gatauskas. Please state your address for the record as well.
Hi, my name is Ed Gatauskas, and I live on First Street West. I have been a volunteer for Parks and Recs for about five years as the, uh, pickleball coordinator at Treasure Bay. So I'm here to advocate for, uh, pickleball courts. About six years ago, the, um, sessions were Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings, and people played for, uh, part of the year. Played until about April, and then there were no games played until the fall, when weather got a little cooler. For the past five years, we've played all year. There's a local group of people that wanna play, and play all summer, play all year. Our group gets larger in the wintertime, when seasonal people are here, and, um, we get up to twenty-six or twenty-eight people. We play on, on the basketball court, it's lined for three pickleball courts. It's oriented in an east-west. All of the tennis courts at Treasure Bay are oriented north-south. Because we're east-west, we play into the sunrise, and it's literally impossible to see the ball at times. And so, if and when we get pickleball courts, we only want them oriented north-south so that we don't have that issue. But the, the facility gets used, uh, people enjoy it. We are in competition with at least fourteen other locations around the area, uh, both indoor courts and outdoor courts. Um, and I'm really here to, to say that, um, in my five years, I've seen the, the use of the pickleball courts increase, I'm sure you see that. It's not, it costs two bucks to play, I'm sure you see that in revenue increase, not that it's a huge revenue. But I'm sure you see that in revenue increase. Um, and so I'm here really for the folks that play, um, on a regular basis at Treasure Bay, to say, we're very, very interested and excited about possibility of some permanent courts. Uh, short-term, you know, as soon as possible, on the basketball court, if you wanna reorient that space, or, um, part of the longer-term plan. But we would really ask that that be part of, uh, short-term and/or long-term planning for us.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next comment is from Linda Johnson.
I wanna thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Linda Johnson, I'm a resident of Treasure Island. My home is on Islande Capri. For the last three years, I've been working on getting dedicated pickleball courts created, rather than playing on our current modified basketball court. I've spoken multiple times with many di- many different individuals at Treasure Island Recreation Department, all of whom have been considerate of the needs of us pickleball players. Those I spoke with, spoke with indicated I play at Treasure Bay for now. I've played there along with many other people. Pickleball on Treasure Island is growing. Amanda Loudon, a reporter of NBC Today, said, quote, "One of the fastest-growing sports in America involves a court and a net." And no, it's not tennis or badminton, it's pickleball. Yes, that pickleball, the one your grandma plays, the one you may consider beneath your athletic pay grade, think, rethink it. Pickleball has had six-hundred-and-fifty percent increase in the numbers of over the last six years, according to the U.S. Pickleball Association. The biggest subset of that growth is not in the over-sixty crowd, says Justin Maloff, executive director of USAPA, but the younger set. When the spurs first, when the sport first caught on in the Sunbelt States around two thousand and nine, it was at a fifty-five-plus centers and RV communities. He says, "It snowballed from there." But these days, there are many municipalities and parks and rec departments that are setting up courts, making it accessible to your younger crowd. Treasure Island should consider building dedicated pickleball courts at Treasure Bay or somewhere on Treasure Island. You should be aware that many of the players that join us are vacationers. Think of the advertisement Treasure Island can do if they create dedicated pickleball courts. Pickleball on Treasure Island is growing rapidly. During prime time, January to April, we have three courts, twelve players playing at one time, and sixteen players waiting for their turn. In fact, there are some days when there are more pickleball players than tennis players. We are outgrowing the one modified basketball court area we are given to use. I hope that this committee will consider that this sport is not a temporary one, but one that is here to stay. Let's put Treasure Island on the pickleball map.
Thank you very much. All right, next is Ralph Lopez.
Thank you, uh, I'm a Treasure Island resident now for ten years now, I believe, I moved here ten years ago from Boston, Massachusetts. Live on Paradise Island, right near Treasure Bay. Just not trying to become the enemy of the pickleball people at all. Uh, the golf course thing is interesting to me, though, because, because where I'm from, what I've done for a career, I always look at things like, when this all came up, when the master plan happened, my neighbors were pretty upset. I had to ask myself, okay, I wanna be upset too, just gotta figure out why, like, let me figure out what I'm upset about here. And some of the reasons that were given to me were extremely valid. What I started to look at, though, is a very directed influence on trying to close the golf course. It's evident from, I'm not gonna consider myself an outsider, 'cause I've been here for ten years now, but since I didn't grow up here, I'm not truly from the island. It's evident from my point of view that there's an agenda here to close the golf course down. And some of the reasons I've heard, now, if someone said, "It just costs too much, doesn't make enough money, blah, blah, blah," okay, I get it, it's fiscal, right? It's more than that. And for me, that becomes a problem where, you know, like was mentioned earlier, you, you get misinformation, or some information, which is slightly worse sometimes, and it's starting to look like, all right, everybody's fighting over this one piece of land, which is a beautiful piece of land, I get it, but just give me the real reasons, and maybe I'll go along with it. Pavilions, all types of things that are promised use, but I really can't see it. No one's really given me a good reason, yet pickleball is a good reason, I, I believe, you build them. As a matter of fact, I think there's enough land there to both coexist. But, what I'm seeing is, is it's becoming more of a muddled thing, where, yeah, grants are available if you change the usage, but can also coexist with a golf course? That statement in itself, it's kinda odd, right? Like, i- if it can go exist, then what do we change it? Now, if there's some of those grants that won't apply, all right, again, I get it, it's money. One of the reasons I specifically moved to Treasure Island was that golf course, it's the only community around the water that has it. So for me, I was like, oh, it's great, it's only nine holes, I, I golf as well. I have two small children, so I haven't golfed as much in the last eight years, but that is an excellent option for people here on vacation, here visiting, people who live here to get out, walk, which is still exercise, get out, golf, whenever they can. And it is nine holes, so it's very doable for anybody, pretty much. You know, as long as you, it's, you know, if you can walk the course, then it's pretty easy. Even saying something like, "Last Saturday, it wasn't used too much." We had like four hours of thunderstorms last Saturday. You know, I feel like I was outside Saturday in the pool when it started pouring. So, information like that's weird to me. And, and again, from my standpoint, I just wanna know what the real underlying reasons are, you're trying to shut down the golf course. And if, like, the other, the other statement that's, again, coming back and back and back, we wanna make sure all of the residents have something. There's no particular activity that even thirty percent of Treasure Island residents are gonna do here. It's just not feasible. For, for one, a lot of the reasons why people aren't golfing is because it's ninety-five degrees up. So, any activity, go and hang in a pavilion, anything like that at ninety-five degrees during the daytime, it's probably not gonna happen. So realistically, why are we taking away this beautiful view? This area where someone who doesn't even play golf can just go walk around? I mean, it doesn't have paths, so if you wanted to make actual paths and get grant, granting for that, that'd be great. But, it just seems like a lot of work to destroy something that is an asset, rather than work on it, improve it, and make it better, and have it bring in revenue. Because another thing that I realized is I, I had never Googled the golf course. If you look at the remarks, mostly negative, it's all about upkeep, it's all about things like, no one's ever tried to run this thing like a real golf course. Start there, if it doesn't work, do whatever you want with it. That's my piece.
Thank you. Anita Finelli?
My name's Anita Finelli, and I'm a resident of the Village of Paradise Island. And I do golf, and I golf at our course every week. And I think one of the things, I think the, um, presentation was excellent and well-thought-out, but I don't think it gives a clear picture. Because when we were talking about how many residents versus non-residents, you know, we want residents to use it, but we also want non-residents to use it, because that's our vacation dollars. That's where we get people to come and, and enjoy what we offer. I would've liked to have known on the statistics of, um, when non-residents versus residents. Again, uh, what he said about ninety-five degrees, I golfed on Saturday in the morning, and it was unbearable. But from January till April, that golf course gets used. I would like to know what those statistics are. I would like to know what they are, starting in September. I think that's a better snapshot. I can also tell you that when I go and golf there, I'm never asked if I'm a resident or not. I have yet to be asked if I'm a resident. And I've been golfing there for almost ten years. So I think that the statistics are skewed. And I think when we're looking at this and making a huge change, we need to look at all of the statistics and look at them properly. I love the idea of grants, I've been in, in athletics all my life. Did anybody look to see if there's PGA grants for community golf courses? Why not? That could be something that helps us. I would like to see the golf course. I agree with pickleball, I like pickleball. I agree we need to do something that brings in revenue. And I can't see where a, um, kayak will bring in as much revenue as the golf course currently brings in. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Wood.
Good evening, Alan Wood, I live on Paradise Island. And, uh, y'all know my opinion of the golf course, but I'll state it for the record that I'm in favor of it. I just would like to kinda echo some of the other comments that you've heard tonight, as well as Saleen's questioning the numbers that came out, seventy, forty versus sixty, thirty, or, or the way around, seventy, thirty, sixty, forty. So, I would challenge that with anything that you put there, because you're, we're a beach community, so we're attracting not just residents, but we're tourists, and people from the mainland. And kayaks, for example, you put a kayak launch out there, I guarantee you, you're gonna have more non-TI residents coming to use kayaks than TI residents. Most of us here on TI already have access to water, and we have our own kayaks, a large portion of us do. So, that's, that's something that I would challenge there. The other thing I would say is that, uh, well, first of all, I learned to play golf on Treasure Bay at sixty years old. I've graduated to bigger courses now, I'm not any good, but I've graduated to them. I'm not any good, but I've graduated to them. But, I still go every week to Treasure Bay. It's a good little course to practice on, to get a few rounds in, especially when I don't have time or energy to do an eighteen-hole golf course. It is a gem. It has the potential to be a real gem. I have got to know golf professionals, and every time I mention Treasure Bay, one of the first reactions I get from them are, ooh, that's a crappy place. Then, next thing out of their mouth is, it has so much potential, that could be a real gem. And so, I'd really like for you to consider that. And the last thing I would like to present is, we have a petition with about a hundred and thirty signatures. I would like to present this to be on the meeting minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Noack?
I live at 433 Hayden Point Drive in Treasure Island. Treasure Island has sixty park facilities. All of them do different things. Treasure Bay was designated to be what it is, a golf course with some activity areas, tennis courts, things like that. It is something that is unique amongst all of the different parks we have, so we need to manage it. I would say that, oh, prior to Commissioner Partridge coming on, I reached out to her predecessor and pointed out that the PGA has programs for marketing the golf course. He passed it on to the recreation department, and there was, from what I could see, some minor efforts, posters and things like that, but no real marketing effort. They use third-party people to do all kinds of things, especially when we have a meeting and an agenda, and we want to go forward with it. We need to go ahead and do the same thing in marketing our program. Get a third party. We always seem to be able to do that. Finally, the only thing I ask is that you take into consideration of not just all of Treasure Island, but the people in the community that live at individual park areas, that you take what their needs are into consideration. You can't just say, well, the whole community likes it, it's just like having a majority vote and saying, that's just the way it is, folks. But, if you truly want communities, you're going to want to go ahead and, you know, protect those things that are important to the people that actually live there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments on this topic of Treasure Bay? I see we have a comment online from, do you want to read that for us, Chris?
Sure, it's from Kimberly, and I apologize, Hairstod. She says, "This is my first meeting, and I'm liking the changes proposed for Treasure Bay. Has anyone brought up a dog park area? We have so many dogs in," I'm assuming it says "our" neighborhood. And she also put in there, "I do like the golf course and play there often with my family, and we enjoy the foot golf as well, as an alternative."
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments who might be joining us online? You can type in the box, or you can unmute yourself and chime in. All right, hearing none. All right, well, any further discussion amongst the commission?
No, just thank you to everybody for staying. This was a very long meeting, and we do appreciate all of your comments and input and patience, and I really appreciate you all being here.
Yes, and stay tuned for those public workshops. I'm sure they would, you would love to participate in those. That being said, we're comfortable, just, we'll move this forward, and we'll have the two public engagement sessions, and then it'll come back before us.
Yeah, so that's what I want to get the direction on. So, you want to continue the conversation about these amenities and that we have the opportunities to procure and get through the grant. So, what we're recommending, because through the master park plan, we have the best attendance at evening meetings, and then weekend for somebody who can't make it on the evening. So, we're proposing one Saturday meeting, like a Saturday morning, and then a evening meeting. And so, we have reached out to Collaborative Labs to tentatively hold some dates, because their calendar is getting full quickly, so we can start to advertise those dates and start to design those community meetings with Collaborative Labs with your blessing, if that's your direction to us. And then, we can pursue that and memorialize the feedback, and then we'll come back to the commission to further discuss it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, our next and last thing on the agenda is public comment for anything else. Anyone else have anything to say? All right. Well, thank you all very much for attending, and as Commissioner Wetzel said, thank you for your patience, and we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.